Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. It doesn't sound as though you enjoy your summer break. Did you enjoy your summer break?
Yes.
Did? Right. Okay. Good afternoon and welcome, everyone. Welcome to today's meeting of South and West Plans Panel. My name is councillor Eileen Taylor, and I'm the chair for today's meeting. Today's meeting is being livestreamed on Leeds City Council YouTube channels so that the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present. South and West Plan Panels deal with applications from the south, north west and west of the city. The aim of the panel is to hear all relevant information from the applicants, members of the public and council offices to help members of the panel to make their decisions. Before we go any further, could I ask members and officers to introduce themselves? Could I start on the left?
Afternoon, Chair and members. Steve Buller, group manager for South and West, Lead Officer for the South and West Plans Panel, and also for one performance only, today's presenting officer.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ahmed Honeidi, Highways Officer.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councillor Sharon Hamilton, Moulton and Meadwood Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Denise Shregan, Bermatos and Richmond Hill Ward.
Afternoon, councillor John Gavanny, Horstworth Ward.
Good afternoon, folks. Councillor Walsh, our heading in High Park Ward.
Good afternoon, everyone. Jordan Bowden, Roundhead Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. Sarah Holmes, Senior Technical Officer, Plans Panel Team.
Good afternoon, everybody. Daniel Lomax, Senior Technical Officer, part of the Plans Panel Team.
Afternoon, everybody. I'm Robert Finnegan. I'm my councillor for the Mowley North Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Trish Smith. I represent Pudgy Ward.
Good afternoon. Councillor Colin Campbell.
Afternoon. Councillor Barry Anderson, Arden Wharfdale Ward.
Good afternoon, Debbie Oldham. And I'm Clark, the panel today.
Good afternoon. Philip Plumtree Varley, Principal Legal Officer and Legal Advisor to the panel this afternoon.
Good afternoon. Jonathan Carr, Head of Development Management.
Thank you. Councillor Ezra Wood would like to introduce us.
Councillor Julia Heselwood, Bramley and Stanley Ward.
Thank you, councillor Ezra Wood. Can I move the agenda to item one, Debbie?
Thank you, Chair. Under agenda item one, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Agenda item two, there are no items which require the exclusion of the press or the public. Under agenda item three, there are no late items of business. There has been some presentation slides passed around to members, as I believe that they have been revised from the set that you originally received. Under agenda item four, could I ask members to declare any interests they may have? I'll take silence as there are none. And under agenda item five, no apologies have been received, Chair. Thank you.
Can we go to item six, minutes after the meeting which was held on the 4th of August? Do members accept the minutes? Accept it? Any matter arising? No? Thank you. Can we now move to item seven? Proposed new 3G pitch and tennis court associated with fence up to 4.4 metre ice from Leeds Golf Course, Gipsy Lane, Beeston. Members can remember that this application came to us back in July, so I will hand over to our chief officer, who will be the presenting officer for today.
It's always nice to get an instant promotion as well, isn't it? Actually, it's group manager, yes. But thank you for that. I'll chase the salary later. Just by way of introduction, this application seeks the full planning for a new 3G pitch and tennis courts and associated fencing up to 4.5 metres in height on the land directly to the south of the Coburn High School. And that was part of the former South Leeds Golf Course just across Gipsy Lane, Beeston. Members will recall that the application was presented previously to the South and West Plans Panel as a position statement on the 7th of July at last panel. And that was for information and comment. And just to remind members of the proposal and the context, I will run through some of the old slides and some of the new ones. And I'm going to apologise in advance for what might be a long-winded presentation, but there's a lot of issues. And at the end of it, I also have a number of updates I need to make members aware of. Some come in as late as about half an hour ago, but I think it's important to do so. So on this particular slide here, which is the aerial photograph of the location, immediately to the east of the site is a small area of regenerated golf course. Whoops, sorry. Oops, something there. Let's go back. This is probably why they don't let me do this very often. So that's there. And to the south, as you can see on this, is a larger area of the regenerated golf course appearing as grassland punctuated by trees which have formerly lined the golf course. To the west is a residential area, I think known as the Links in this little location here. And then beyond that, the land falls away down to the outer Ringwood and to the White Rose Centre beyond. This site, just this slide rather, shows a site in relation to the wider Middleton Park holding of Leeds City Councils. The golf course, which ceased to operate over two years ago, you can see there is indicated in red, has been subsumed into the wider Middleton Park Estate. Although there's a long-term strategy for the improvement of the Middleton Park Estate, the site, the subject of this application, was specifically excluded from this when it was first drafted. And for context, as I say, the red line indicates the application site, the brown area, the redundant golf course, and the black, the Middleton Park Estate in its entirety. And again, for context, the application site, which is the red bit, I know that it forms of approximately 5% of the redundant golf course area in brown. And as you can see, it's a much smaller proportion of the wider Middleton Park Estate as exists at the moment. This close-up aerial photograph shows the relationship of the application site to Coburn School and the existing playing field. So you can see it's immediately adjacent and across Gipsy Lane to the south. And you can see on the top, the top right, the existing playing fields. What that photograph doesn't show, unfortunately, is that there is a 3G pitch that's been constructed approximately 10 years ago in that location there. This is an old photograph sadly, which comes relevant later because one of the issues in terms of the alternative locations, which we discussed at some length last time, the construction of that, if you were to accept the size of the new pitch that's proposed, that then precludes the development of this area if for no other reason, because of the remaining area left. But there is also some history that's contained within the report that gives again background to some issues in terms of developing that site, regardless of the drainage issues that we discussed at some length last time. So just moving on, this slide shows the school access of Gipsy Lane, which those on site will recall. And then the following slide shows the actual entrance to the school down here, which is just a little bit further down Gipsy Lane. Now, this slide shows a view across the site, west to east, and you can see quite clearly that, well, I understand it because there used to be a golfer, although some might question that, that this is actually one of the fairways with the trees lining either side. Slide nine shows a view of the southwest. And slide 10 is a view to the southwest and northeast. Now, what this slide shows in particular, I'm just going to jump ahead and then come back. If I can just point there, that section of trees is part of the area of the 38 trees that are referred to at some length in the report to remove. So there's that section there. That's retained because the tennis courts are actually to be, proposed to be constructed at the other side. And then there's this section here of the trees to be removed. And if I can just jump on a few slides, just to put it in a bit more graphic form. So that photograph was looking down there. And the trees on the left were those, and the trees obviously on the right, oops, were those. So those are the ones that are removed, and that's the, obviously, the location. So if I just go back, if members are okay, is that, yeah, just to go back, just to try and make it a little bit clearer. So the pitch, in effect... I think I need a battery, isn't it? What's wrong with it? The pitch actually would effectively start along that line and see the removal of that section. Those are retained, these are retained, and these are retained, and all the other trees on the preceding slides are retained. So reminding members of the layout, this proposal, the proposal shown on slide nine consisted of the new full 3G pitch, which you can see the tennis courts, obviously, to the left. So I apologise for this small nature of it. And it shows the fencing lines around the perimeter, which is there. Okay? The planning permission also indicatively shows the proposed diversion of public footpath 207 and the permitted bridleway, which will be rerouted to the south of its current alignment, which is purple there. And of course, just on the outside of that, there are proposals for soft landscaping to the south and west of the site to mitigate against the tree habitat loss as a consequence of the proposal and to provide a wider landscape strategy, including significant shrub planting. There is a further slide that shows the areas of that in more detail, which I'll come back to. These broader works also include, as I say, the realignment of the public right of way, which will be created to mitigate the loss of the public access to the section of the PRO that I referred to. What I would also stress at this point, though, regardless of what decision is made today, and if it should be an approval, the closure of that particular public right of way is a separate process that is carried out by public rights of way themselves. So regardless of what happens today, if it should be approved, there's still a further approval process that has to be gone through. So it's not absolutely certain ultimately that that will be closed as a result of any positive decision today. This shows a series of sections on the left of the screen of the platform created for the pitches. It's clear, obviously, that there are some significant earthworks in terms of a cut-and-fill exercise, which is cut here, as you can see from the other side here, and then the fill here to create the flat land platforms. But again, it's important to remember that despite these significant earthworks, this is a golf course, which of course is a man-made structure in its own right. And there would have been significant earthworks carried out during the 1950s when the golf course was created to create the greens, the bunkers, and of course, the fairways. The bottom right on this particular slide here, it's actually, it's really poor. It came out a lot better than the computer. It's actually a 3D image of the pitches. So obviously, that's the pitch there with the cut section here to remove earth, to get the flat area, fill here, tennis courts here. And if you remember, I said there were some trees on the left that were retained, which were quite prominent on one of the earlier photographs. That's that section. The removed trees would be in that area and that area there. And this is retained, and there would be additional planting. And you can see here, again, in red, that shows the line of the trees that are proposed to be removed by the application. And you can see the significant planting here retained. And if you remember in the context of one of the earlier slides, slide two, you could see the wider ancient woodland which forms part of Middleton Park Woods. This shows a detail of the section of the pitch and the cork construction, both of which are intended to be porous to allow the water to drain through. And both have filtration systems and also covered by a condition to ensure that there will be no detritus that would wash off the pitches and into the water course. And you can just see on here, the construction is the artificial grass. The crumb, rubber crumb and sand layer is actually in the base of the grass. That's partly for, I might be repeating myself here, but that's... Sorry, I'm just waiting for my colleague to turn that off because it's on the slide I want to look at. Can you? Thank you. Well, obviously, I've got the opportunity to move the slides on here. I must have pressed something that's done. Oh, there we go. Can you just take us back, please? Dan? Thank you. All right, I'll be a bit more careful. So you have the grass on top. The reason for the rubber crumb and the sand actually is, there's a number of reasons. One is to actually ensure that the artificial grass on top stays erect, so it provides some support to the base. But this is obviously a pitch of the size that could be used for rugby and football. And if you think about the impact of a rugby player landing on his shoulder onto a pitch, you need to have some protection in terms of the bounce back, so they're not hurt. But also, the blue layer underneath is the most significant supporting layer to prevent injuries. And then effectively, what you have underneath is several layers, including like a gravel layer that is one huge attenuation tank. So any water going into it, on the pitches in particular, goes into the attenuation tank to obviously restrict the flow into the water course, so it can be done and bled off gently. And as I say, there are conditions attached to ensure that there's no, none of the detritus, if there should be any, from the rubber et cetera to get into the water system. Again, an image at the bottom which shows the layout of the pitch, the three tennis courts, the accessway to obviously make it DDA compliant in terms of the long ramp sections, because there was concerns about that. And you can see here the type of fencing that's proposed, partly at 4.5 metres in height around the major pitch itself to prevent the balls coming out. It's slightly lower around the tennis court. And it's visibly porous, so you can see through it. And again, that will become important later when we talk about the issues related to the green belt. Again, this in more detail shows the trees to be moved in red. The dominant green and purple colour shows the extent of the trees in the area to be retained and their root protection areas, because there was some concern raised previously about impact on other trees. So the root protection areas are shown clearly on here, that the pitch obviously will take out the 38 trees if approved, but the distance to the other trees is maintained to protect those. And particularly to the ancient woodland, which is shown in yellow on the right-hand side of that slide. There's a buffer zone of 15 metres, which is the yellow zone, but then the nearest point is actually 31 metres away from the ancient woodland, which is the bottom right corner of the pitch. And around that particular slide, you can see some more sections. It's interesting the way they've done them around the sides, but the one that's really of importance is the one at the bottom. The one at the bottom again shows the cut-and-fill exercise and tries to give an image of what it might look like with the additional planting, the existing planting in place. And I know it's a little bit small, but that is taken from the south, looking onto the southern flank of the proposed major pitch. So the tennis courts hidden behind the higher trees, the taller trees shown on the left, and the pitch itself is hidden behind the new planting because the view is actually taken from approximately there. So what it's showing, these tiny little dots here, are the proposed new planting, which is policy compliant plus a few extra, about 15. But any wider views, as you step back, the views into the pitch then become more hidden by the existing tree cover and the established trees that form part of the lining of the fairways. This slide shows the new tree locations. I think it's 45 heavy standards with some whips, around about 70 around the perimeter here, the smaller dots. Now, the reason for the smaller whips is actually whips establish quicker and better than the more mature trees. And because there is already an existing significant core of existing mature trees around, to ensure that they establish properly, it has been lent slightly towards the whips to establish around the pitch itself that aren't relying on the heavy standards, because although the bigger and have more impact and taller, they are much more difficult to actually establish when you remove them and plant them in a new location. The other thing I would say about this as well, if you look at the location of these trees, shocking this. Dan, have we got another one of these? Sorry. The way these have been positioned around the perimeter also helped to reduce the formal nature of the landscape in this particular area, because at the moment it is lined by these trees and it's quite obvious it's been a golf course in the past. But this will then de-formalise, if that's a word, the landscape in that area. This actually shows the graphics contour. Nigel went through this. I won't linger on this because we all know that the deeper red sections are where the cut will take place and the lighter colours at the bottom end, because the slope running from here to here is where the fill will take. So cut here and it buzzed it down here to create a level playing field. Members recall, as I say, that it was prevented previously and that the panel was not... Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, there's worse to come potentially. Panel members were not convinced that the scheme before them was the optimum solution when it was considered as the position statement and that further work was needed. But the panel also acknowledged at the time, they wanted to see children in the school and the area to have access to the best possible facilities. Therefore, further information was sought relating to a number of things. Now, I'm going to run through those specific points that were actually mentioned, so please bear with me. Then I'll go back to the material considerations. Further consultation with the local ward members was raised as an issue. And a briefing meeting was held by the applicant and the local ward members from Middleton Park and Beeston and Holbeck Wards on the 21st of July. And it was understood at that time that a joint statement was to be issued. I've not received a joint statement, but I have received very recently, half an hour before the meeting, an email from two of the ward members, which I am going to read out at the end of the presentation. The requirement for needs assessment to be carried out as requested by Sports England. Well, the application site is not designated as a playing pitch or a golf course, interestingly, and golf courses do not fall within the remit of the Sport England policy. However, the applicant has stated that the proposed facilities have been designed to meet Sport England and Lawn Tennis Association standards. A full needs assessment has not been carried out because it was deemed unnecessary as the golf course was closed in 2019 due to the declining net membership and to the level of vandalism that had been occurring on the site. And interestingly, no one came forward to actually continue the operation of it as a golf course. And that included Leeds City Council, who of course did have a reasonably extensive golf portfolio themselves, but have also been reducing it because of declining membership in the area. And people will be aware of some of the other closures. And of course, Temple News, which was provided with two full-size golf courses, Dorothy and Irwin now only exist as one. The site was chosen as it's Leeds City Council-owned, and it's due to its location, obviously directly adjacent to Coburn School, as I showed earlier on. The closure of the golf course has provided an opportunity to transfer a small section of the former golf course and are referred to 5% of the golf course land being the transferred land to a trust to view an adjustment to the existing lease for outdoor sports provision and to help address the shortages of the outdoor sports facilities of the school and therefore allow the delivery of the school's curriculum. It is critical to the school and to the trust that the additional sports facilities are provided adjacent to their existing site to enable the integration to the secure school boundary, for obvious reasons. But to list them, safeguarding reasons and to avoid unnecessary management and logistical issues that would arise from the use of remote facilities, and I will come back to that a little bit later. The applicant's supporting statement outlines the details behind the loss of the golf course, but it also reiterates that its closure is not linked to the development proposals. That was a separate issue dating back to 2019, as I mentioned earlier. And on this basis, it is considered that no further evidence is required to demonstrate that the golf course is surplus requirement. So the key issue is there, it's not actually covered by the Sport England policy anyway, but there's enough evidence to suggest that actually it's no longer required. With regards to details of biodiversity measures and carbon capture from the new trees, members requested more detail. Again, it's critical to remember that the proposed tree replacement strategy before members is actually policy compliant and slightly above it by approximately 15 trees. The applicant has referred to the sport as supporting detailed reports and surveys undertaken and notes that the proposed development will result in the removal of the 38 young to early mature trees. For clarity, none of these trees are covered by tree protection order, and they do not fall within the conservation area. The planning application is supported by a detailed tree survey as well as now bore cultural impact assessment. The impact of removing the trees is acknowledged, and the design team have considered various options to minimise the tree removal. However, it's not possible to retain these trees due to the position within the application site if you are to accept the size and scale of the 3G pitch proposed. I've mentioned previously that 15 more trees have been added, which means that approximately 130 new trees will be planted as a result of the application. And in addition to the replacement trees, the applicant is also undertaking extensive scrub planting, which I showed earlier, within the wider site with a mix of native tree and shrub species, which totals some 2.4 hectares of new planting. Due to the delays in the project and the rise in the prices of materials, the applicant has encountered additional costs, which also means that they have stated that they are unable to fund more trees because members did ask for that, but that is the reason behind it. The ongoing costs creating them difficulties were being advised. With regard to members' request to provide an assessment of carbon sequestration of the trees, unfortunately, the applicant is unable to provide this detail at this stage, again, because of the cost issue, but also it should be pointed out that we currently have no policy to support insistence upon this. Now, that is a policy vacuum which our policy colleagues are looking at. But as I say, at the moment, there is no policy to support that request. However, in terms of biodiversity position, the recently updated calculations show that there will be a 21.94 net gain in biodiversity points following the development as a result of the additional planting. This is more than double the required 10% to the policy compliance. And with regard to the recent comments provided by the nature team on the value of the existing grassland, the applicant carried out an additional survey and it concluded that the habitat classification presented in the ecological impact assessment is correct. The nature team has suggested that the whole site is part of the league habitat network and therefore should be scored as a high strategic significance in the biodiversity metric. For clarity, though, even if the strategic significance was changed to high, the total project score remains the same at 21.94% gain in habitable habitat units. Regards locating the pitches on the existing Coburn campus, it needs to be fully and properly considered with regard to consideration of the drainage matters, was a request by members. Now, members suggested that the further consideration was required in addressing the drainage issue at the existing pitch, the grass pitch. The main argument of the application put forward is that in line with the Department of Education guidance for soft outdoor PE spaces, the school has a deficit of 35.5% of outdoor sports provision, which means they are unable to deliver their curriculum. In addition to that, they have continued to take additional children, circa 211, at the request of the council, which has exacerbated these issues. Water logging is a genuine issue at the school on this site. And whilst placing the proposed 3G pitch on the existing grass pitch in that location, if I just go back a few slides to remind members... Nope, wrong one. Not two now. Which was in that location here. The deficit in provision would still not be addressed because, as I mentioned before, there's already an existing pitch in the bottom-left corner of that grassed area, which actually precludes the placement of the full-size pitch. So in essence, the area that's left is too small to provide a full-size pitch. It should also be mentioned that 10 years ago, placing a smaller 3G pitch in this alternative local... It should be also be mentioned that 10 years ago, placing a smaller 3G pitch in this alternative location was proposed, which actually was approximately in that location and it buttered at one end the residential properties to the north. However, the alternative location that was proposed because of significant residential amenity concerns was withdrawn. And a subsequent approved application was located away from the northern boundaries far as possible to the south. And that's the location I referred to previously, which is actually there now. So it was removed and a second application was subsequently approved to assuage the concerns on the northern boundary. For clarity, the area to the east of the existing 3G pitch has also been assessed, but it was discounted due to contain the school's athletics track. It's just off that slide. And also with it being in close proximity to the ancient woodland, that as I mentioned before, requires a 15-metre buffer zone between the development and the woodland. And also, if the proposed facilities were to be constructed within the school site, this will result in the temporary loss of the existing facilities to facilitate the construction, which of course during that particular period would further exacerbate the issue with the school's ability to deliver the curriculum. There would also be a loss of car parking due to the need to form a construction access through the existing car park that was recently delivered as part of phase one, which is in this location. Thus potentially displacing the vehicles outside the school boundary onto the neighbouring network. So just flicking back through the slides. Slide 17 shows the cobble path in the north-east core of the site and slide 18 is actually a slide from the other end, looking back up to where the first photograph was. Now, the concernary, the public access has been considered and members asked the design team to explore the opportunity of public access to the existing cobble path outside of ours. The existing cobble path will remain in situ, but due to the need to integrate the application site within the secure boundary, access to it will be restricted and given that the application provides a new diverted path to the south of the new facilities, the proposal does not offer the opportunity to keep the path open outside of school hours as this would require redesigning the fencing proposal, including additional gates and could also introduce safeguarding issues which I referred to previously. Concern relating to the potential community use of 3D pitch, a robust and enforceable community use agreement was also required. As outlined in the accompanying planning statement, if members have looked at the, in more detail at the proposal, the development will be made, will be made available for community use. There is no currently Coburn-specific community use agreement, but the lettings of the existing facility of this school are managed by Leeds City Council's school and community letting team in line with their hire policy and charging schedule. And although academies are free to set their own charges and approve or reject applications for use of their facilities as and when they come through, I'm not aware that this has occurred and there is no intention to change the current process, which is managed by Leeds City Council. And just for information, the existing facilities are usually available 6pm to 9pm Monday, Friday, 9 to 6 on weekends, unless the school agrees to a late booking. And the lettings team have advised that based on their records, Coburn School is open a lot of the time for community use bookings and has a very busy schedule in this regard. The highways office confirmed that the parking provision is sufficient to support the community use of the proposed development. And with regard to logistics of accessing the site after school hours, the school has confirmed that the school gates will be open and to allow access to the 3G pitch. In addition, they have school staff on site available should they be required. So construction management plan details was an issue, given the contractors are often appointed, once planning permission is secured, the applicant intends to submit a construction management plan at the discharge of condition stage. However, a contractor has been appointed and the applicant has provided some details of the construction phase, which are considered acceptable. So a condition would also be added on, there's an extra layer of comfort for that further detail. But what we have so far includes the proposed location of the contractor's compound and details of the temporary storage of surplus materials. And for clarity, these details have been submitted in response to the comments provided by the landscape officer to ensure that they do not impact on any of the existing stroke retaining trees. I briefly touched on the disabled access and drop-off arrangements required for the pitch use and tennis courts. And again, as stated in the accompanying design and access statement, the applicant acknowledges that the gradient of the site is notable and presents some challenges. However, all paths are designed to ensure that the proposed facilities are fully accessible to wheelchair users and other disabilities. The proposed paths will also include resting and passing places and access to the site and the drop-off within the existing car park area, which I've already pointed out on the adjacent school site where there are changing and toilet facilities for the use of the pitch. Now, again, just an interesting point to make here is this, this application originally did have changing facilities within the green belt associated with the pitch, but through negotiation to minimise the impact on this area, that was removed and now the, the facilities were used within the existing car park. So just going back to that one to leave it there. So now members, if I can just talk about the key issues, ultimately come to a conclusion because I know that's been long-winded, but and I say there are updates. Design and visual impact. The design of the proposed pitch and courts are considered acceptable with regards to the visual appearance and drainage. Although they will be cut and filled to achieve flat plot forms, as I've stated previously, it has to be remembered that the existing landscape is not naturally a result of the works to create the golf course in the first place. The proposal will be shielded by existing planting and additional tree and shrub planting in excess of policy requirements and all fencing is proposed to be visually permeable. Neighbouring amenity. The proposals were located away from residential properties as far as possible, no loitering is proposed. And a noise assessment, which has been considered by our environmental health officer states that any impact associated with the use of the pitch, because of its location and the design, i.e. cut into the hillside, will be negligible. And just on the lighting point, although within the design and access statement, it does state that there will be cabling provided for future, potential future lighting. Obviously, I discussed that with the school as to why that was done and on their part, if you think about it logically, if they were to even consider that, to put it in at this point during construction, it has to be more logical than actually digging up everything that you've just built at a later date. But to assuage any, any concerns about that, obviously, that would be covered by a further planning application, which of course I suspect would probably come back to this, to this venue anyway for discussion. So that explains why it appears, although it's not actually shown on the drawings such as this one. As I said before, the proposal will be shielded by the existing planting, et cetera, et cetera. The application has been accessed by, assessed by the council's highways engineer and raises no issues of concern with regard parking exhausts or other highway safety issues, although I have been requested recently to add an additional condition on which I'll come back to later, if I may. Landscape in terms of direct tree impacts, we know that it's going to seek the removal of 38 trees, the vast majority of the trees being category B, which are good quality. And as part of a mitigation strategy, the replacement trees now to be provided at a ratio of three to one as required by policy land two. Therefore, the proposed is policy compliant in this respect. Now, I know members were particularly concerned about that and I've had a discussion with the policy colleagues about this. And I think everybody accepts now because we've debated this particular point at the panel on a number of occasions that realistically, we all understand, I think, that trees need to be planted at a greater ratio than that. So at the moment, we only have the three to one policy, which is a bit of a crude instrument. However, a policy has been developed with a chart, which is not public at the moment, but is to be considered next week at the development plans panel, which actually is very, very sophisticated in terms of assessing the girth of the trees, the age of the trees, the condition, et cetera, the height that's been removed and then suggesting increased planting ratios based upon that information and in some cases it can be up to 20, potentially 27. Where we put them all might be another matter, but, but I, I mentioned this only because unfortunately that is not, although material consideration, it has no weight at this point because it will go to development plans panel next week, at some point future of that, it will go to, not scrutiny board, sorry, executive board, my apologies. And then sometime next year, there will be a public consultation exercise and of course, that is likely to be amended through that process, but it's only after the public consultation exercise is completed that that will be adopted as council policy. So although it's there, it's not actually a material consideration at this point or one of little weight, simply because of the position it's out in the early stages. In terms of ecology and biodiversity, in relation to the broader ecological impacts, the supporting report confirms that the proposal will result in the loss of the habitat areas within Leeds Wildlife Habitat Network. Although the report indicates that various individual habitat areas of low ecological value collectively and without mitigation, the impact would be significant. And as noted in the applicant's response to this though, with the additional planting, shrub planting, tree planting, et cetera, ultimately the net gain is still seen at 21.94%, which is above the 10% policy requirement. I would also just make a point about the hedgehog release because that's been raised in some of the, the comments from resident support groups recently, which I will go back to at some point. It's been confirmed by Parks and Countryside that the application site is not used for hedgehog release. That is actually within the woodland and measures are to be put in place, obviously to, to not, or to minimise the disturbance of the habitat and the foraging because hedgehogs do travel some considerable distance at night when foraging, up to two kilometres, I'm advised. Other issues, councillor Burkhead raised concern about the loss of the ancient woodland. Well, the ancient woodland is unaffected by these proposals. I say at its closest point, it's 31 metres away, which is on the south-eastern tip on this, this slide. Objectors have raised concerns relating to the loss of the path and historic cobbles and this would cause to local heritage. I'll stress again, it's not to be removed, but due to the fencing and safeguarding issues, access will be restricted. Regards to function of the green corridors we prefer to in policy N8, the site is publicly accessible for informal recreation and provision will be lost, but replaced with the sports facilities that will be made available for wider community use. Again, it should be noted that such loss equates to 5% of the golf course area and obviously is much, much less in context of the wider Middleton Park estate, as I showed on slide two. The site is not allocated to public open space. And although in any event, in any event, policy G6, which relates to the protection of any green space, would not necessarily preclude such a development, given it would be used for outdoor participatory sports. Furthermore, the wider proposals indicate the provision of tree planting landscaping and biodiversity measures, et cetera, and improvements to the proposed diverted public right-of-way. Turning to drainage matters, the application has been assessed by the council's drainage engineers, flood risk management, who have no, raised no objection to the principle of the development. I mentioned a little bit earlier when we looked at the sections of the pitch and how it operates, that the courts will be provided with a permeable surface, gravel layers, which will act as a holding tank beneath the pitch, allowing runoff to be controlled. And with regards to particular runoff, in terms of the rubber, the design of the pitch base and filters will prevent this. And the pitch is endorsed by Sport England and such, this type of pitch is still endorsed by Sport England. And such matters are covered by other legislation in terms of airborne particulates and, and pollution by the Environment Agency and that's really not an issue for panel to consider today because it's covered by other legislation. I have looked at other studies, interestingly, about the, the construction of this and the concerns that were raised about carcinogenic issues and to be open about this, because it does reuse, reused or recycled rubber. There are, it's really a chemical issue rather than the particulates themselves apparently. There are legislative bodies which I can refer to later if members are interested that have looked at this. And they're basically, in Holland in particular, have done some of the more sort of cutting-edge studies recently. Their, their own body has actually come back and they've used the phrase that actually it's negligible is the possibility of any, any health issues being caused as a result of the particulars. So finally, to the main issues for consideration after that. And I'm sorry, I am going to continue. Principle of development, the site is located within Greenbelt and therefore the main issue in relation to this application is whether proposal constitutes inappropriate development in the Greenbelt. They set out in the development plan and having regard to national policy and set out in the framework. This document advises that inappropriate development is by definition harmful to the green belts and should not be approved in accepting very special circumstances. And if it is inappropriate development, whether the harm by reason of inappropriateness and any other harm is clearly outweighed by other considerations. So as to amount to the very special circumstances necessary to justify the development. Yeah, that's a mouthful, isn't it? We blame our policy colleagues for that. But the key thing is that although the provision of sports facilities can be considered to be not inappropriate development, as defined in paragraph 50 of the framework, consideration needs to be given to preserving the openness of the green belt. So just to stress that, these types of facilities can be seen as not affecting the, as not inappropriate development. However, you have to consider also whether it preserves the openness of the green belt and the purpose of including it within the, the land within it in the first place. So although the operation of laying out the tennis courts and 3D pitch will include the removal of trees, other vegetation and level changes, these will be screened to a degree by the presence of the retained trees and landscaping and remodel earthworks and the creation of the landscape buffer. It's therefore considered that the proposed development, so far as it relates to the layout of the pitch itself and the courts, has been carefully situated where it will effectively be screened from long-distance views for all the reasons mentioned before. In this context, the modest scale of development proposed, its design and locational backdrop, the inherent spatial and visual effects arising from the development would not harm the overarching sense of openness. That said, however, the proposal does include the provision for fences consisting of fencing of 4.5 metres in height around the 3G pitch, which I outlined earlier, a height of 3.5 metres around the tennis courts and 2.4 metre perimeter fencing for general, basically to stop unauthorised access. Now, fences and gates are not listed as noted exceptions to the green belt policy. So just bear in mind that, that slight conflict. The proposal would therefore constitute inappropriate development in the green belt by virtue of the associated fencing, not the pictures, but the fencing, as this would cause harm to the openness of the green belt. Members will recall provision of sport facilities, et cetera, because we've discussed this at other venues, that not inappropriate development is not inappropriate development as defined in paragraph 150 of the MPPF and previously referred to in this, in the report, paragraph 113. To properly engage in the weighing exercise and therefore come to a decision, it should be remembered that the fencing is well-meshed to maximise visibility and permeability through it. Painted dark green to reduce its visibility and will be viewed against a backdrop of existing and additional tree planting. Therefore, it's considered that the fence will, although inappropriate by definition, will have minimal harm to the green belt. And this conclusion is supported by a number of field decisions, which are summarised in the, in the report that you have before you. Against this minimal harm, it is necessary then to balance the other considerations, in this case, they are considered to be substantial. The report outlines the recent expansion of the school, which has consequently placed additional pressure on existential formal outdoor, outdoor play space, which was already inadequate because of the school role. The applicant has also referred to the ZFE guidance contained in the soft PE spaces. And based on this guidance, it means that the school has 64.5% of the required provision and a deficit of 35.5. This deficit, this deficiency cannot be provided within the parameters of the school boundary, as I've explained. boundary, as I've explained earlier. And in terms of the proposed fencing treatment, the school requires a safe and secure environment for its pupils in order for the school to meet its duty of care in that regard. Although this guidance is not, is not a mandatory, sorry. Although this guidance is not a mandatory requirement, Coburn is an outstanding school in an area of some deprivation, which should not be denied the opportunity to provide students, the wider community with first class sporting facilities, if considered appropriate by members. So with regards to the issues, the loss of thirty eight mainly category trees, good quality and immediate visual harm of such will be significant, but as assessed above, this will be minimised by the surrounding tree cover and to subsume when viewed from distance. In longer term views, aided by the above policy requirement replacement planting, the development will be, will blend into the broader context and will not detract from the overall character of the area. We've mentioned the mitigation planting before, so I won't repeat that. And it's accepted that in terms of climate change, the council declared climate emergency, that the value of these trees regarding their carbon storage and mitigation of air noise pollution and flooding, of course, is very important. On this issue, though, there is no evidence suggests that once the development has been completed and landscaping and planting reaches maturity, the proposed scheme would fail to accord with any planning policies aimed at combating climate change. Excuse me, indeed, over the life of the development, there will be a net gain in carbon sequestration as the trees mature. But it's accepted at the moment with the, with the council's current three to one policy, it, the tree planting will not provide the sequestration that the loss of the thirty eight trees would do immediately, it will take time. So the new scheme would incorporate the new extended landscaping, including the hundred and thirty ever standard trees, and would ultimately mature and contribute to visual immunity, as well as the council's commitment to providing green infrastructure and combating the effects of climate change. Equally, considerable weight must be applied to the overarching need for this development and substantial benefit of providing sufficient play and sport facilities to address the school's current deficiency. Furthermore, the development will also be available outside of school hours for community use, which will have a significant broader public benefit and help to reduce the deficit which exists throughout the, throughout the city. In terms of highway consideration, the impacts and the, and the impact on living conditions surrounding residents, the proposal is concerned to be acceptable. All material matters raised by third parties are summarised, have been considered, and those that are not materially in planning terms have been identified in the report as such and acknowledged as such. So against this background, it's concluded the development is acceptable in planning terms. The definitional, definitional harm of the fence that's agreeing about is considered to be minimal and that this harm and any other identified harm is considered to be clearly outweighed by the other considerations to amount to the very special circumstances necessary to justify the development. It is therefore recommended that the application be approved, subject to the conditions in the report. Now, Chair, if you'll just bear with me a little longer, because I'm almost there. Subsequent, subsequent to the drafting of the report and the presentation, I've had a request for an additional highways condition with regard to a car park management plan. So in coming to a conclusion, members need to be aware that that's not listed on the front page of reports, but also conditions to secure future maintenance of landscaping to be agreed with Parks and Countryside, because the, the commute at some is still under some discussion between the two parties. And in terms of ecology, the ecologists, although obviously regrets the, the loss of the environment as a result of the pictures, they are now requesting additional conditions regarding the construction of a name, sorry, a construction and environmental management plan, a biodiversity enhancement management plan and a biodiversity monitoring programme. So in addition to that, members need to be aware that two further letters of objection were received by myself yesterday, and I think members may have had sight of them, because they were, they were sent, or at least one of them was sent direct to the panel members and the ward members. There is no automatic reason why members should disregard those or not read them, but I will outline the, the key bullet points. I can go through it paragraph by paragraph, but I don't think you want another twenty three pages of it. But these have come from South Leeds Former Golf Course Community Group, which is the one to nine pages, and the South Leeds Golf Course and Land Pressure Group, which comprises the Friends of Middleton Park, Beeston Community Forum and Cycle Pathways, which is actually the private nonprofit company that runs the urban cycle park, which is adjacent. So the issues that have been raised, just in bullet point, is loss of the, I mean, they are covered by the report and the presentation. Loss of the current informal use, public right of way changes, impact on Greenbelt, issues surrounding climate emergency, impact on the wildlife habitat, question the academy's intentions and some suspicion about the, the school role and whether that will be reduced, which I'm informed would not be. Increasing flood risk, questions regarding the community use, questions regarding suitability of the pitch design and enhancements to the environment, concerns regarding modelling works of the land and of course, the hedgehog release, which I've referred to. We also received a further objection from councillor Carlisle, which covers many of the same points as well and raises one or two questions about all concerns that have been covered previously. And then just before panel, if you recall, right at the very beginning, I'd mentioned that members had requested what the members' view were on this. So just before councillor, just before panel, councillor Andrew Scopes sent me an email, and I'll just read this out in full, because it's view. And it's also the view taken by councillor Sharon Burke. And it just says, it's a shame we can't speak, because they did submit a request this morning to speak at plans panel. But the deadline for that actually was earlier in the week. So in probity terms, after a discussion with the chair, we declined that request. And I suggested that they put their concerns in writing. So this is, succinctly, this is a really difficult decision with really valid points on both sides. We appreciate the time and effort that the residents have put into the consultation process and have read and understood their concerns, which we sympathise with. However, on balance, our view is that the needs of the children in South Leeds must be provided for. And in essence, apart from saying we can't go through all of the arguments in the short email, that is their concluding comment. And at that point, Chair, I'll hand it back to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And we have three objectors to speak today. We've got Alan, Suzanne and Linda. Could you three please take a seat over there? Thank you. In total, you've got four minutes to speak. Please go ahead.
Hi, panel. My name is Alan Shaw. I'm the Chair of Trustees for the Friends of Middleton Park charity. The charity works with the council and the community, promoting Middleton Park and working to protect it for the community to use and enjoy. We have prepared, alongside other partner organisations, a full report that details all our objections, that I hope you've had a chance to read. Our key objection is that this development will permanently change the land that was added to the Middleton Park estate in twenty nineteen, following the closure of the golf course. And I would point out that this is a permanent change rather than the change to create the golf course in the first place. Building a three G pitch will require significant landscaping and the addition of multiple manmade layers of material into the site to create the playing surface, including cabling for lighting, which although not included in this application, will, in our view, need to be added to make the site viable. This would be a significant construction on what is Greenbelt land, which is not covered by the exceptions listed by the National Planning Policy Framework. Our view is that this allows some construction for sport, but not the addition of a plastic pitch. It should be noted that the appearance of the pitch will be green, it is actually anything but. Three G pitches are devoid of life. The site is currently full of life with multiple species of butterfly, insects and birds identified. The site is adjacent to an important hedgehog release site, and the panel will be aware of how important this work is. Although the applicant states that the development will improve the site's biodiversity score, how can changing a thriving tree lined meadow into, to a plastic fenced off pitch be adding species biodiversity to a site, even if there is additional planting included? The site currently adds to the achievement of the government's screening commitments, this development will not. It will create the need for a regular regeneration of the pitch. Although the development will use recycled rubber crumb, studies have shown that loose crumb, as suggested, could be carcinogenic, with microplastics leaching into local streams and then into the city's drains near the South Lees. In conclusion, we feel that this development is not needed. New school facilities are due elsewhere. It's not suitable for the Greenbelt and is not supported by both government and council green policies. It will create a barren wasteland for wildlife. Finally, it is not wanted by the community. Of those who play community football, only thirty percent play on a full size pitch. The only decision you can make is to refuse this development. Thank you.
The pitch is not sustainable development. It exposes children to hazardous chemicals. There is massive microplastic pollution from rubber crumb and other plastics. It has a short lifespan. There is no end of life policy with the council. There's no recycling in the UK, it's against the Leeds Waste Strategy. It pollutes soil and water. Particles are ingested or breathed in, which is against Leeds air quality strategy. It creates an urban heat island effect, which is against Leeds air quality strategy. It's located in Leeds Wildlife Habitat Network, which is against policy G nine. It indirectly harms ancient woodland and local nature reserve, which is against policy G eight and the Leeds Park Strategy. It destroys carbon storage on site. The development is not policy compliant, because the council landscape architect has already advised you so.
And personally, I started with this because of my interest with the ancient path, I used to ride it. And now I walk it at least three times a week, it's a dog walk. When previous work was done on that path, about fifteen years ago, they had to put a membrane down to protect the cobbles underneath it, because it's historical value. This time, with this work, they've dug all the path up, we showed you the nice shiny new one there, dug all the membrane up and just laid the concrete road on top of it, destroying it. At the start of the development, we had a public meeting with the school and we said, couldn't you have the fence at the other side and save all the hedge? Thank you. And are there any questions for the councillor Campbell?
Yeah, I'm not sure who to address it to, but one of the documents we received, I think from one of you three, there was a reference to, I think it's the Beeston Neighbourhood Plan and the path itself, which is apparently mentioned within the neighbourhood plan. There's nothing about it in our papers, so could you tell me what the neighbourhood plan says about the path?
And it's a historic, they've designated it as a historical asset of Middleton Park, so that's what they've got.
So it's, it's actually within the neighbourhood plan, it's a designated historical asset?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Esler. Yeah, I've got, I've got two questions to, 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 to of the objectors. Can I ask them both at the same time? Is that, yeah? And just when you were, I kept talking about the pitch needing replacing, you said the lifespan of the pitch. I just wondered if you could tell me if you knew how often the pitches needed replacing? Because I have a concern about what happens when the pitch needs replacing. And then I've got another question to yourself, sorry.
Right, so the pitches need replacing every eight to ten years, but also every one to two years, you also have to get more rubber crumb. So there's more rubber crumb every one to two years. And then afterwards, there's no end of life policy that the council have actually done so far. And so what would happen is it would just be the supplier or there would a specialist company come and take it away. But there's actually no UK recycling. So what's happened in the past is it's just been stored up in warehouses, because you can't dispose of it, because it's like, obviously, it's like toxic waste. Sometimes it's been, it's been sort of reallocated to, to, I don't know, to like people's, people might just buy it for the garden. And a lot of it's actually ended up in the third world as well. So it is very problematic and they are, they are trying to get more recycling available, but there is none in the UK. And up until about a year ago, there was only one in the whole of Europe.
And I have another question. Can I just ask you? You were just talking about the fence when you got cut off there, because I know time was up. So you said about, you'd asked the school to move the fence to the other side, so the hedge could be retained, but then you were cut off. I just wondered if you could tell us what the response had been to that.
The path and the hedge that runs all the way along it are on the maps from the eighteen hundreds. So we know they were all at least there then. And we asked the school if it would not be possible to have their fence put at the other side and a gate opposite the school gate, so the kids could, you know, they could unlock it to use it. And the headmaster said, no, because in this day and age, if they had to walk over that six foot path, they might be at risk. So they couldn't do it that way, they had to have it all in one go.
So is the hedge, the hedge will be removed then?
Oh, so yes, they're going, they're going to make all that part of the, the school thing. They've already destroyed the top half of the hedge, because they dug it up to widen the road. But I think the signs are now, or there was signs there telling them not to do any more at the moment.
Thank you. Sorry, I know I'm asking questions, but I had Covid on the seventh of July, so I wasn't here for the discussions. So apologies if I'm asking questions that have been asked before.
Could you go back to the edge and said, which edge is it? Because there's edge around, which particular edge? I think one of the pictures showed the beginning of the path, where, where you go from Gypsy Lane on to it. And it's now all nice and concrete and, you know, like a road, that bit.
Can you put the presentation back up, please? And take me to, take me to slide eleven. Hedge, just a second, sorry, is that the hedge that we've been referred to?
That's a wide bit of the cobble path. That, that's what it was originally like as you walked on to it. And then I think before that, you've got the picture of what it looks like now. No, the other way. It's just, it's a concrete road, it's just a plain white road and they've dug up all the trees and the hedges. I do actually have pictures of all the roots of the trees showing where they sent the digger down. And you can see the old membrane and, you know, where they've dug it all up and destroyed the hedge and everything. It's not good.
Chair, Chair, just, just to try and clarify, this, this, this picture is the cobble path, but it's shown from the east side, looking across. And the other one is from the other direction, looking down. So my understanding that this, this has not been harmed and is not intended to be harmed as a result of the application. So I think we're talking about something completely different to these two slides.
No, we're not. The, the other side was just like that.
Yeah, but, but sorry, just sorry, bear with me. That's not part of this application, is it?
No, but the, the part that is looked exactly the same is that the cobble path was a cobble path. with a hedge on either side of it. Well, the school thing and a hedge there, but the proper hedge at the other side of it.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm not wishing to interrogate you. All I'm trying to do is to be clear as to what we're talking about. So actually, you're talking, I think you're talking about the entrance area to the school.
Talking about the Gypsy Lane side of it. But it, to look at it, you would think that's the same.
Well, just, just.
Well, it's a cobble path with a hedge on either side.
Just for clarity for members, although access will be restricted, there's no intention to do anything to the path that you can see here. Um, meant not to be affected.
I'm, I'm not suggesting that it's the other side, which I've said all along.
Sorry, I'm not asking about the path, I'm asking about the hedge.
It's okay, councillor, it's, I think the edge haven't comes up. As Steve says, it could be the other side.
I, I have an issue, sorry. Um, the, 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 the objectors said that they're gonna, that she's concerned they're digging a hedge up and asked for the fence to be put at the other side of the hedge so we don't dig the hedge up. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're laying hedges around the city because of the, because of the climate emergency. So I want to know where the hedge is that we, that we, that the school are saying they're going to take out to put a fence up because I'm not happy about that. If we can put a fence on the other side of the hedge and leave the hedge where it is, then that's what we need to do. So I want to know where the edge is.
And, and, and councillor Hesley Wood, so do I. So this is all I'm trying to, uh, to, to find out here. Are we talking about, is, is it this? Is that what's the concern? Is it that hedge?
If, if you go back to the picture that's of the road, I think you can see what's left of it on the right-hand side. Right, I think it's where those trees are. It, it's really hard to tell because of the way that it took the picture.
Well, my, my.
What's the other picture of the road where it looks wider? Yeah, as you go down there.
There's no work there, is there?
As you go down onto it, the cobble path started there at the end of the, no, the, at the end of the double yellows there on the corner. The cobble path started there and all the hedge was on the right-hand side going down. And it's the rest of that hedge that we were talking about not being destroyed. But.
Yep, uh, sorry.
This part of the school's going to go straight across.
Well, because, right, uh, we can address this question directly to the applicant because they are going to have the opportunity to speak. But I don't, I think we're slightly across purposes here because that was historic damage, I think, because there's no intention to alter the entrance to this. Um, excepting further down where you would have to gain access to the new pitch. I don't think this affects the hedge at all.
After, yeah, they are going to speak after.
Can I just say something? I think what's important there to remember is what we're saying is that that was a cobble path that was much cherished by people going down. And in the first phase, in phase one, they destroyed that with no regard to the local community's love of that. And that's why it just looks like an access road now. And the fact is, when you're telling the local community that that school will be in charge of the rest of that path, we have absolutely no guarantees that that will be completely and utterly trashed because that's what they did to the first half in phase one.
Okay, councillor Walsh, did you raise your hand?
Um, thanks, Chair. Um, ju- just, just a question related to the first gentleman who spoke. So this, this proposal will resume, result in the loss of five percent of a recently gifted to community area. So is, is it your contention that the loss of that five percent is so heinous to the, to the wider area? They override the, the benefits for the school? I think it's, I think it's a reasonable question, Chair.
Is councillor well?
It's perhaps high level and a tou- touch philosophical, but, but I think it goes to the heart of it, yeah.
I, I'm not sure I can answer the fact that it's highness to the benefits of the school. That's not my, that's not my role. I'm chair of trustees of the Friends of Middleton Park charity. We look after, as I say, and manage and help to, help, help working with the council for the whole of Middleton Park. I re, I understand that it is only five percent of Middleton Park, but it is an import habitat area for the park. If you think it's an important meadow area, it's just been established as a meadow area. It's used by the local community, so it's one part of the park that we'd like to see kind of retained if we can. It's also an important entranceway into the park. As Linda said earlier, she uses that path to get into the park. Every, every week, three to four times a week, she walks down that path, gets into the park that way because it's a, it's a level route into the park. So it's used extensively by the local community, it's enjoyed by the local community. It's part of the twenty-minute neighbourhoods. It's, it's well-used, that's all I can say. And there are obviously other parts of Middleton Park, Middleton Park, as you saw on the map, is massive. It covers a wide area, but there are lots of different environments within that part, and this is an important part of that.
Can I just add something as well with it being part of the twenty-minute neighbourhood? It's because it's open space and that's what, for personal safety, for women and other vulnerable groups. That was the reason that I've always used that piece of land because it's quite near residential, residential housing and you'd go on that. So it's, it's a specific, it's got specific qualities, that piece of land. It's not just any old piece of land, it has that open quality, which, you know, as I say, vulnerable groups and women appreciate. If you put a big fence around it, you, you create hiding spots and it'll no longer become safe. So I think sometimes you should address the safety of the community as well because that's what open space provides.
Councillor Finneken?
Um, taking it, I'm sure you'd agree with us all that is doing a great job is this particular school. And taking it that the kids there have more than a third less of the land that they need for P and other activities. How would you resolve that problem?
Um, well, they've got, there's loads of space in the park, for example. There's other things that they could try, which, um, they've got the, there's the cricket. There's a bike park that they could get more involved in. They've also got their own land, which is substantially a lot larger than most other schools. They could have a, they could put a pitch um on to the, on to the part that they've already got the rugby pitch. Um, I think somewhere it says about that they wouldn't be able to do that because they had over sixteens, but it's a school for eleven to sixteen. So that's, that's not right. Um, they could also use John Charles. Um, we're in a, a time of where it's, it's going to be very difficult for people to pay for sports facilities. We want to keep John Charles viable for the local community. Why would you divert funding away from John Charles? It makes no business sense. So John Charles is within, it's within five minutes in the minibus to John Charles, which has just already just got a new tennis, tennis courts both in and out. Also, by, by introducing children um to the local sports facility that the council already provides is that, that means that they're going to use that again. You're introducing them early, so it'll go down to John Charles. But if you don't actually acknowledge that that exists in a school, you know, that they can use those community facilities, then they're not going to know about it. So it's, it, there's, there's plenty of things. I mean, there's another football hub going up um at the other part of Beeston. We don't actually need this, need a pitch there. The community won't use it. And I, and I must say that we've had, um, the local community have been monitoring the use of the pitch over the summer. It's been used on a night, a total of five times, three times, um, three Wednesdays and another two Wednesdays, I think, where on one occasion there was two people playing. On the other occasion, there was three people playing. And other than that, it was used the first week in August um for the, for children and that's it. It's never been, no one's ever seen anyone there on a weekend and it's just honestly been used for those Wednesday evenings. And that's only five since July the fourteenth.
Thank you.
Um. So your view is you don't seem to have any practical ways of increasing the space available within the school. But your view is the environment would be enhanced by pushing kids in and out on a minibus down to some other sporting facility? I understood that correctly?
There's, there's loads of facilities around that they could use. I don't see why, I don't see why, in the, in the time of the climate emergency, I think people can remember, we've all been to school, that we might have had to go to a swimming baths, for example. What should we build every school a swimming baths? Because they can't swim at their own school. You have to make use of, um, it's called a circular economy, um, trying to make use of the resources that you've already got instead of create, recreating more.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you very much. We have, um, two speakers in favour of the application, who is, um, Maria and David? Thank you. You've got four minutes between you two.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. My name's Dave Guernan, I'm the head teacher of Coburn School. Coburn School was built with a capacity of a thousand and fifty pupils, two hundred and pupils per year group. Lee City Council asked us to permanently increase our pan to two hundred and forty per year group, increasing the school number to twelve hundred. In addition, we were approached by local councillors, lead elected members and senior executive officers to take additional bulge cohort of sixty pupils. We did this to support the local community. We deeply cared about the children within South Leeds and we wanted the children who live within the local community to come to their local school and not have to travel across the city to schools that had been allocated to them. So we currently have twelve hundred and sixty-four on row. So the school has increased from its original number of a thousand and fifty. We have a deficit of thirty-five percent of outdoor sports provision, which has forced the school to reduce the range of sports that can be studied by pupils. We operate a thirty lesson week where most schools in Leeds operate a twenty-five lesson per week, hence the additional pressure on sporting facilities. Whilst we recently gained a new modular building built on the skills existing tennis courts, we agreed to take an extra thirty students from this September at the request of Lee City Council and local councillors. The proposed new facilities will give us increased capacity for football, rugby and replace the tennis courts loss. This will ensure that our pupils can study practical sports and take part in more extracurricular activities. Coburn is described as a school working in challenging circumstances by the DFE with high levels of deprivation. And the children who attend the school are part of the local community. They are the future of the local community. Coburn is an outstanding school, only achieved by two point seven percent of schools nationally. And if we want to still deliver an outstanding education, we need good to outstanding facilities for the children. And we're only asking for what the children deserve. Thank you.
Good afternoon. To add what David has already said, I would like to reiterate how important it is to provide the school with the ability to continue to deliver an outstanding level of education. I would also like to use this opportunity to address aspects that the local community appear to be most concerned about. In terms of the proposed measures to intercept the threeG pitch rubberized granules from polluting the area, the pitch contractor allowed for decontamination units at each gate. In addition, all of the proposed new playing surfaces and access paths are formed in porous materials. Rain falling onto decent surfaces percolates through them and is contained within a layer of gravel that is separated from the natural soils beneath by impamable membrane. The manhole contains a flow control device to limit outflow of water and a sandpit to remove any silt and other suspended fine materials. On the subject of trees, we fully agree that the loss of the existing thirty-eight trees is regrettable. But as demonstrated as part of the planning submission, the mitigation planting, which includes hundred and thirty new trees, will result in considerable net gain in biodiversity. While whilst we are unable to provide more trees, the remainder area of the former golf course to the east of the site will include creation of four point four hectares of woodland that will further mitigate tree loss and improve carbon storage in this part of Leeds. In regard to concerns relating uh to the welfare of hedgehogs, the potential for impacts on hedgehogs is extremely low. However, as a precautionary measure, initial groundwork could be subject to ecological supervision. Overall, the proposed planting uh within the former golf course is anticipated to be significantly beneficial for hedgehogs due to creation of new habitats. Lastly, I would like to clarify that the support comments contributed by the pupils were voluntary and were not made at the request of teachers, as some objectors have suggested. Coburn School has a very active student council and the pupils' participation in a democratic, democratic process such as planning should be viewed as a positive thing. To conclude, the proposals will deliver a beneficial addition to the school facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open up to members, um, could you tell me how many percentage of your pupil from the local community attend your school?
Uh, for the um recent admissions figures, the children live less than a mile from the school. So at Coburn, we, we're an oversubscribed school. Uh, this year we had over eight hundred applicants uh for two hundred and forty places. Like I said, we agreed to take an extra thirty, so that's two hundred and seventy. But the children live within walking distances, so it's less than a mile. So the children who live within the local community, we don't bus a lot of children uh from outer areas because of the, the demand of the local community.
And if these children wasn't going to your school, they'd have to be bussed miles away from your area. Um, I just bear in mind that Leeds have a policy of child-friendly Leeds and the children is for tomorrow future. So I do think the school, what you are saying is based in on local young people and which is benefit for the community. So in other words, you are giving it back and all the activities is giving it back to the deprived local community. Thank you, councillor Hamilton.
Um, my question, I don't know if you've got the, the um, path with you on um number thirty with regards to um the proposal, where we, well, okay, let me start. The existing pitch on Coburn um campus need to be fully and properly considered with regards to consideration of drain matters, drainage mattered. And then down on number thirty, it stated, for clarity, the area to the east of the existing G, threeG pitch has also been assessed, but it was discontinued due to um containing the school athletics track. Okay, I won't go reading all, all that. But then it says this will result in a temporary loss of the existing pitches to facilitate the construction, which would further exacerbate the issue with the school ability to deliver their curriculum. So my question is, that mean to say you've assessed it and it can be done? However, is that being discontinued due to the fact that the, um, it would delay? It would exacerbate the issue with the school ability to deliver the curriculum, but it can be done?
I'm going to take this question, councillor, if that's okay. So yes, we assessed whether we could uh have the proposed pitch within the existing school site. And the answer is no. The current size of the proposed pitch will not fit to the north of the existing threeG pitch, nor to the east, it's just too big. However, if we were asked to consider a smaller size pitch. So when, the smaller size pitch does fit within that location. However, A, it doesn't need, meet the needs of the sports department. We have asked them whether they can deliver, or they try to deliver on the larger pitch. On a smaller one, it's not exactly what they are after. And there are other considerations. The disruption to the school during the construction is only just one element. I have provided a few other reasons why we can't do it. We're still going to be taking trees out if we go to the east. We're quite close to the ancient woodland, much closer than we are on current site. And ultimately, I think the key thing in here, although we, we have considered it because we were asked by the planning officer and the members. Our planning application is for the former golf course rather than for the school. So it's, if we wanted to do this, this is not part of this application. However, it has been fully considered.
Well, you're saying that it would be smaller. Is that without the, the um tennis courts? So it could be done, but without the tennis court?
Yeah, so we were only considered, we were only asked to consider the threeG pitch rather than the tennis courts. We were, we were never asked to put the tennis courts on the existing site. So yes, we could only fit the tennis courts. I think David might wish to add something to that, if that's okay.
Yeah, so in terms of the school, we have to deliver the.
So in terms of the school, we have to deliver the national curriculum and three areas of national curriculum are competitive sports and that's one of the areas, so for the size of pitch, it's got to be a pitch where competitive sports can be played on. And when we looked at the guidelines, the pitch that we put in for this application is the pitch that we need. And also because of community use, a lot of the community are older than 16, so we restrict community use. But we do have students at school who are over 16, because we have students who are out of year, like many schools, schools do. So, but it still doesn't address the deficit, we are 35% short. We were 35% short when the school was originally built in 2008 with 1,050 students, we've now got 1,268. We increased the school pan, we agreed to take 240 per year group instead of 210. So that's put an additional 200 students within the curriculum. And like I said, we delivered a 30-week school where many schools in Leeds deliver 25 because of the provision. All students study PE, it's compulsory from year seven to year 11, they have three lessons per week of PE. We think it's vital within the community of South Leeds to address some of the issues of obesity, mental health, fitness and it's become really, really difficult to meet the needs. We could have said to the local authority, to the local councillors, no, we're not gonna take additional children, but it's my firm belief, it's a community school, it's not my school, it's a community school, it's the heart of the community. Ofsted said that, this school is at the heart of the community and it's for the children of this community. And we just can't deliver the curriculum and we're feeling the pressures and we're having to restrict what we're delivering. And, you know, we're a child-friendly city, you know, it's our future, the children are our future. And like I said, if we had the space within school, then we would apply and build, you know, the extra facilities, but we're landlocked, we don't have the space.
I could just draw your attention back to the other pitch, what is it, the upper end? There was an application 10 years ago which was declined because of the objection, so you couldn't have put it up there because this we have to go at present, am I right?
Yeah, we had a local meeting with the local residents and they objected to it being so close to the border of their houses. So we said, well, we'll move, we'll move the 3G pitch to the other side. So we listened to the local community and we moved it at their request.
Councillor Island?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, I'm really concerned with how you're pitching this, because you seem to be blaming the council because we've asked you to take extra pupils, the school's a school, not a private business, I just wanna make that point. You said yourself it's at the heart of the community, so please don't blame the council for asking you to take extra pupils. I have two questions, one is about the hedge, this hedge and the fence, I want to know about that because we're laying hedges around the city, I'm not agreeing to any hedge to be ripped up, to be replaced with a fence. I want to know why this fence can't be put to the other side. And secondly, why can't these pitches be grass? Why are we digging up grass? Why are we digging up our natural resources to put a load of plastic down? I'll give you an example, my son's just left school, he's 16, he was at school, I can give you the name of the school, their playing fields were on the other side of a road, they were all grass. So he went out and did PE on grass pitches for five years while he was at high school. So why can't we have these pitches? I am not against facilities for the kids and the local community. What I have issue with is digging up a load of grass, meadow and trees to replace it with a load of plastic. So I know you're gonna say, because it's all year round, so it can be used all year round. Lots of other schools use grass playing pitches all year round, grass playing pitches all year round, so I want to know why it can't be grass.
I'm just gonna take quickly the question about the hedge, so no hedges are being removed where the cobbled path is. Just to clarify this, we're not taking anything from there, every single tree and a shrub that is being removed to facilitate this development is marked on a plan that was included within Steve's presentation. So I've tried to follow the objectors' comments, but I don't actually understand, I think it is a historic issue and with no hedge and councillor, you are right, we are planting more and ideally if we can, we don't want to lose. So we tried really hard not to lose anything there, but definitely no hedge is, you know, it's problematic in terms of our fencing. We can still have the fence for safeguarding reasons with all the existing hedges over there, that's absolutely fine. I'll let David answer the other questions if that's okay, thank you.
I'm not blaming the council for taking additional children, the local members and local authorities said, will you consider? And I said yes, because the children live within the local community, they live on the doorstep. So there's no blame for the council, I work with the council, I work very closely with elected members to support the children's education, you know, I'm an educationalist and it's, you know, we all know that education's the only thing that can improve life chances, so that's the first one, I'm not blaming anybody, the local children, they live in the local community, they're part of the community. Secondly, the reason why we've gone for a 3G pitch is because of usage, because we have 1,200 children, they have three lessons a week, five-year groups, so it's about maintaining the pitches and making sure that they can be played on. And also we've looked at some of the sports that we deliver and 3G meets the needs. And I struggle sometimes, why are we denying the opportunity when we can have outstanding facilities? If we went to Harrow or Eton, private schools, they've got 3G pitches, 4G pitches, tennis courts and we deliver outstanding education for the young people of South Leeds, we should be celebrating that, you know, that is an achievement. To do that, we go against the grain, you know, it's unheard of for inner-city high schools to deliver outstanding education. I'm talking about February when Ofsted came, we've done the same to South Leeds Academy, we've changed that around, it was inadequate for 10 years. Ofsted have just been, it got outstanding and good, children within the local community. And I'm not gonna sit back and compromise the education of young people and settle for second best, why should I? Why should the people of South Leeds? All right, the school are gonna put a major investment, we're gonna invest a million pounds from the school budget to match fund Leeds City Council, that is a major commitment from the governors of the school. So we're using local money for local children to improve the facilities. So it's not about politics to me, it's about education and it's about making sure the children of South Leeds get exactly the same standard of education of any other child regardless of where they come from. And that's what it's about to me and I wouldn't be a good head teacher if I didn't fight for my school, for my children and for the community and that's why people want to send children, that's why we've got people from the school on the youth parliament. That's why we've got children and active school council and it's about being a community. And like I said, Ofsted did that and, you know, I agree with you, it's unfortunate trees have to be cut down. I asked the planners, I asked the architect, please, can you revisit, please, can you see if it can be done an additional way? And they came back and said, no, it can't. And because a golf course became available from 2019, it allowed us the opportunity to improve the facilities. And all we're doing is improving the facilities, all right, we're not doing anything else. It's so we can deliver the curriculum, because we're short, we're 35% short. I couldn't understand if we could deliver all the curriculum and we were not short. But according to DFE guidance, we are, I'm sorry you're getting upset because I'm speaking my mind, but that's what I'm doing, okay? That's what me, it's my opportunity to answer your questions.
Can I just come back in please, I've got, if it was Harrow, I'd be objecting to a 3G pitch at Harrow as well, I don't discriminate. And, and please don't tell me I'm getting upset, don't patronise me. And my son went to a school, we've done all those things that your school wants to do and all those things that your school are doing and they've still got a grass playing pitch, so I don't understand why we're digging the grass up to lay a load of plastic.
Councillor Finnegan?
Just come, gonna just mention the tennis courts, sorry.
Finnegan?
Um, I've got the minutes of the remote meeting of the executive board, Wednesday 24th of June 2020. Councillor Blake in the chair, other people on it at this particular point, where they agreed in a nutshell that the proposed for the free old transfer of the land identified within the submitted report, which forms part of the former South East Golf Course at Colton, Monty, Academy Trisby approved to allow the delivery of the sports field provision required as panel of proposals detailed. So, exec board 2020 are basically saying, look, we want you to do us a favour, you need to take these extra kids, we know that you're committed to the local community at that particular point. Part and parcel of the deal is that we'll give you the land and we'll support your application to extend the spotting opportunities for working-class kids. Taking into account that you seem to be having a bit of a battle at this particular point, you feel that perhaps the city council welched a little on that deal? You can choose not to answer that if you feel that it's unhelpful.
Sorry, councillor, don't answer that question, councillor Finnegan, I don't think that's absolutely relevant to...
That point's been made, I'll withdraw it, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Campbell?
I'm sorry that you feel that we're not trying to get the best for kids in South Leeds. In fact, I'm not so worried, I resent the idea that you think that, I really do. We are sitting here trying to square a circle, quite frankly. So I'll ask the question, well, two questions really, one is, the chair seemed to imply that in the questions about local children using the school, that somehow if these facilities weren't created, you'd start turning children away, I'm assuming that's not true, right, okay. The second one, I would ask the question, we know about the executive board comments and you built the extension, what was it, 2019, 2020? Why has it taken up to now to come forward with the application for a playing pitch? Because the, the basis to your argument is that you have a shortage of, to meet the DFE guidelines, you have a shortage of space, why didn't it all come at once? The logical situation would be you would build the extension and the pitch at the same time, rather than come back in tears now.
Shall I answer that?
Can't answer the question, but I'd rather you do not elaborate anything on the executive. And also councillor Finnegan, this is, councillor Campbell, this is phase two application, but you can go ahead.
So it was originally, we were putting the application in for the modular building and the 3G pitch, but because of the speed, we needed the modular building and because it was a, it's a Leeds City Council application, it's not a school application, the officers at Leeds City Council said would be better doing it in two phases, phase one and phase two, unfortunately, we didn't expect phase two to last so long. And that's the reason, we asked for it all to be done together, but because Leeds City Council and the applicants, they said we'll do it in two separate phases.
Am I just to add to that because the applicant team is not here today? But I was advised that that's the actual reason, also confirming what David said, that why this was done in two phases. So this was the advice that project managers had given to the school, because the modular building was needed very quickly, so they didn't want to combine them into one contentious application, knowing especially that this is a green belt side. The application, if I believe, was for phase one was 2020, so it wasn't that long away till we prepared this one, but thank you.
So clarify to members that this application was submitted in February of this year as a pre-year, okay? So councillor Smith?
Thank you Chair, I also take exception at your comments that we don't want the best for the children in your school. We want the best for children all around this city and there are many schools around this city who have a deficit of playing facilities. So I really do take exceptions to that, I'm afraid. In my own ward, I've got schools that don't have any playing facilities and they have to use public parks. So I've got, I've got three questions for you, please. So first off, with the attenuation, which is on slide 13, where we've got the different layers of how the 3G pitch is formed, is there any data to support the depth that's needed? We've heard how the area is subject to flooding, so what is going to stop the pitch flooding and remain usable all year round, as is your want? Is there any data to support the depth of that attenuation, please? The second question is about the ramps. Now you've put some ramps in which are DDA compliant for access to the pitch and the tennis courts which are on your site, but you're moving a public footpath and you're diverting that around an area which again is very likely to be undulating, shall we say. So have you put any thoughts into the DDA regs for the wider community when you move that path, please? And then my last question is regarding the lighting, so if this is passed today and you get permission to create this area, you will future-proof it by putting in cabling to allow lighting. Now, it's in green belt, we shouldn't have light pollution in green belt and I think at the last meeting when this came before us, I asked the question about lighting because without, without the lighting, the pitch is not available to the wider community for most of the year and yet you're kind of saying, I don't want lighting, but I'm gonna put the electrics in. So I'd like those comments, please, thank you.
Thank you councillor, so the first question in relation to the depth of the pitch and flooding and potential drainage issues. I'm not a drainage engineer, just to clarify, our planning application is supported by flood risk assessment and drainage strategy. So in line with that strategy, the engineers design everything so the pitch isn't flooded and obviously the depth, how, I mean, the depth of the construction works, everything is related to the drainage strategy. However, there's also a second opportunity for the council to assess our strategy and whether we're doing this correctly, which will be at the planning condition stage. However, we have not received any concerns from flood risk management team in relation to our strategy for draining the pitch. So at the moment, as far as I understand and as I was advised by our technical colleagues, that is in a concern, but I think it's a very valid question. In terms of the ramps, yes, so we've got obviously access ramps to the pitch and to the tennis courts and obviously we've mentioned in Steve's presentation, we've got resting places during, on the paths within this application site. In terms of the diverted public right-of-way, it is a separate application, but that's something I'm personally dealing with, so I can explain the DDA compliance. Our, the diverted path is gonna be three metres wide, so it's much wider than the existing one and it's gonna be flexi-paved, two different types of flexi-pave. The one that is basically, different types of it because of the root protection areas, but ultimately what that means that it's gonna be accessible for everyone. Horse riders, because it's a permissive right-of-way as well, wheelchair users and people with all sorts of mobility issues. So actually, this is actually part of my application for the diversion. The new footpath is more user-friendly, more accessible than the existing one. Levels are slightly different within the area where the footpath is, diverted footpath is proposed. I've got a drawing that includes the levels, but our architect took the levels into account and basically assessed whether the wheelchair user or anybody with mobility issues will, can actually access it safely and continue the journey on a path onto the ancient woodland and rest of the paths that links with the old one. I think that addresses hopefully question two and just a question three about the lighting. Yes, you are correct that we put infrastructure for the lighting and initially our proposals include the lighting columns at the pre-application stage and we have discussed the impact with the ecologists, with the planners and decided that we're gonna take this out of the proposed scope of works at this stage. Just to go back to one key thing, that it wasn't a hard decision for us to take them out because the main reason why we need those pitches is to meet the curriculum and the curriculum can be met during daylight hours, even in the winter, with some stretch on some of the months. But of course, we do try to generate funding for the... But of course, we do try to generate funding for the school, for the schools from the communities. So communities is still important. We, I haven't been informed of any plans to include the lighting in this application. It's not included, obviously, at the very end of it. And if the school wish to apply for lighting, they will need, as far as I'm aware, they will need planning permission. And as Steve mentioned in his presentation, they will be back in front of you members to consider the impact of the columns. I think they have a right to do it in the future if they wish. But nevertheless, all the impacts that you councillor, thinking of, impact on ecology and the area will have to simply be considered. Thank you.
One very quick comeback on the lighting. So you've got money to put in cabling and infrastructure that you don't actually need, but you don't have any money for additional trees.
I understand councillor that, yeah, I'm happy to take that question. So I understand that the initial scope when the budget was costed, bear in mind that I'm obviously now the person responsible for budgeting of this project. But we took the cabling, enabling into account when we were budgeting this project. We took the three to one replacement ratio and amount of trees we're going to need to purchase. We took into account all the surveys we needed to do as part of the planning application. And I think I've said it before, and I appreciate it might not sound like a genuine answer, but it truly is. The delays on this project cost money. And they're, basically, we ran out of money. Cabling was always part of it, so there was money put aside. And I, and I'm sure the entire design team wishes that we had more money to include the trees and we have looked at it. But this is, this is how it works. We ended up with a huge delay with the application and the costs, daily costs of delay in the construction and the fact that if this gets approved today, the construction will have to take during winter months, it's costing us more money. So I'm sorry if I can't provide you with more details on that and because it's obviously budget related and that's something that I do. But I hope that addresses it at least a little bit. Thank you.
Councillor.
Yeah, I just wanted just to clarify a couple of things because some of the percentages are just confusing me. So in regards to, there's a thirty five percent deficit. Is that a thirty five percent deficit on overall land that you don't have or specifically the soft play? That's, so that's, yeah, if you could answer that one first.
Sure. So how, this is a deficit based on number of children at the school and based on the current playing pitches. So everything is taken into account. The grass pitch, that gets waterlogged. They still use it if it's waterlogged, I've tracked with David. The 3G pitch, the athletics track, everything they've got on the site has been basically taken into account. So one of our design team members done a calculation. So there's a formula to do it. It's basically, you take amount of children and what provision you've got and what sport you can teach. And then based on the guidance, you see whether you've got enough, you know, enough spaces to teach that. Obviously, delivery of curriculum and the fact that the school actually delivering more lessons than comparable schools in Leeds also takes into account. So I don't know if I can say anymore of that, but obviously this is all calculated of what school existing provision is. Thank you.
And the thing is, is I guess due to the lighting question, but I guess formerly of the, of the previous pitch, this might be maybe a comment to the officer, I'm not entirely sure. Was the amenity to the residents specifically due to the lighting that you ended up needing? And so if it is the lighting, you're going to now potentially build a new 3G pitch with no lighting. And so then you're going to spend a million pound on then something that then isn't going to be used because then you don't have the lighting, because obviously the lighting isn't within this application, if that makes any sense.
I think I can answer half a bit and I will pass it over to David. So.
Sorry, yeah, interrupt on this, but because I've researched the history, because it's me that raised it, obviously in the report about the location of the withdrawn application. There was something around about sixty nine objections to that application, but it covered a number of issues, lighting being one of them. But one was the close proximity, one was tree, tree loss, one was potential for balls going across. One was noise, because it was literally hard up against the, the boundaries, some of the properties on the, of the northern side of the pitches. And I say, it's an interesting conundrum, this, isn't it, in a way? Because actually, we've got into a lot of debate about potentially moving it to, onto this other site. But this is a debate that was happening full ten years ago and discounted and resulted in the current pitch, which is on the southern side and exists, which now obviously also restricts the size of putting a big pitch there, even if you wanted to. But why would you, I suppose, if you're going to get loads of objections again? So it's an interesting conundrum. It was a mixture of reasons that the, the pitch was moved.
Thank you, Steve. I think that answers most of it and that's very, very helpful. But just to say about the fact that we don't have a light, a lighting and we're still going for it. It all goes back to the fact that the school just wants to deliver their curriculum. So ultimately, if this wasn't the main driver, they would have pushed more for the columns. But at the moment, the key priority for them is to deliver those lessons and be able to offer all those sports to the children. So I guess, you know, going forward, and also there is another thing. If you, I work on quite a few schools and I'm sure councillors have also knowledge on this because a lot of these schemes end up in this room. So if we, you know, if we include the pitch this with columns, changing rooms, you name it. Ultimately, we have to have a business plan how we're going to pay for those features. So at this stage, obviously was more important to just have the, what we need for the actual score before we start thinking. But I think the school needs to think about the future because there are clubs in the area. And if, you know, they decide to open, open the pitches to them, they need to have the facilities that meets the requirements because otherwise they will not be able to generate those funds. But nevertheless, the application for lighting will have to be separate. There's no chance that element is added now and will have to be fully considered on its own merits. Thank you.
Good. Councillor Giovanni.
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned decontamination units by each gate. What do they consist of?
Thank you councillor. So I don't have the full design because it will be at the condition stage. And again, I'm not a contractor. However, what the contractor told me, that every single gate will have the decontamination unit. Basically, it works both ways. I think you put your feet in it and it takes all the residue from wherever you came through. So you don't actually pollute the pitch and destroy its quality. And that's the same thing that holds on to all the sand and the rubber crumbs when you're leaving the pitch. But we understand that if people don't use it properly or just walk through it really fast, that might be an issue. Therefore, all the other surfaces within the development have the porous surfacing as well as the entire strategy to capture the sand and any, obviously, any other material. And I would be more than happy to provide further details on condition stage because we have to anyway. We had a contractor appointed about halfway through the project. So some of the nitty gritty details in construction stage drawings have been produced in time to present it to you. So apologies that I can't really, I don't, I didn't want to Google it because I don't want to lie to you. What they're going to do when they're actually going to go with a different product. There's a wide range of products available on the market, but they're called decontamination units and they will be at the gates. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson.
I've got one question and then I've got some other ones afterwards, depending what the answer to the first one is. Are you working, are you the client of the council at all? Or is it just a school? Are you acting in their capacity? Yes, yeah.
Hello, hi. So I'm the agent. I'm acting on behalf of Leeds City Council, who is the applicant, so site development team, that's, that's my role, planning agent.
Keep microphone.
City council application, the Leeds City Council are refusing to go further on trees. Leeds City Council are refusing to give us biodiversity information. Leeds City Council are refusing to give us information on the car, the carbon footprint. I had, I made exactly the same point last week at North and East Plans as well, that the council are wanting us to go further on climate change. And unless the council start leading, how can we expect other organisations citywide to do things? It was brought up last week and that was one of the reasons that it was deferred last week because we needed further clarification as to what the council would and would not be willing to do to make this development acceptable. I'm asking you from the point of view of how can we make this acceptable? So that's why I'm asking you that. I don't know whether you can answer it because last week the agent said that it wasn't within their pay grade to come up with answers like that. So if we can parlay that one, but then the more precise questions. Earthworks, roughly how many vehicles are you going to need to flatten this area out? The reason I'm asking is that this highways officer had a lot of problems with both Horseford Golf Course and Headingly Golf Course doing exactly the same thing and causing absolute havoc in the local community because the conditions weren't set properly in the first place. So how many vehicle movements would you be doing with that? In terms of the debate that you've seen taking place over the rubber crumb. Now, last week, we had people quoting Sports England saying that everything was acceptable. The Football Association saying everything was acceptable. We then had an expert from a health background saying it wasn't acceptable. So what evidence have you been able to get on behalf of the children? Because after all, the bottom line here is it will be the children's health that will be affected in the long term. So what assurances have you got about the health impacts of the rubber crumb? And then the final one is the recycling of the pitch. We know that that's got to be done every eight, ten years or whenever it is. It may, it may actually come quicker if it's proved that the people who have got objections to the pitch are proved that it should be done quicker because of the potential health impacts. Where are you going to take the pitch to and what are you going to do with it? Because again, we were advised that there is no great process for disposing of these types of pitches. For good or for bad, that's not, this doesn't affect just you, this affects a number of other applications. So the question is about the council and going a bit further. Earthworks, health work, the health impacts and what you're going to do about recycling the pitch.
Marie, before you answer, Jonathan would like to come in here.
It's just on the first point about the council's role as a, as an applicant in this instance. Clearly here we are sitting as a planning authority considering a planning application. And there is a clear distinction between the council as an applicant and the council as a planning authority, which is quite correct. There should be a clear distinction made. And as Steve has outlined and we've discussed at length, we consider the application submitted to this planning authority is policy compliant with the council's current policies. And that's the basis upon which we're judging this planning application. Anything above and beyond that, which the applicant may wish to include within the scheme is a matter for them rather than us as a planning authority looking at a policy compliant, planning application.
On that point, I've raised this at Development Plans Panel in the past. And what we've set is the minimum standards that need to be adopted, not the maximum standards. If an applicant chooses to go further, it's the same as a housing applicant, this was a housing applicant, which is not. If an applicant wants to make it into a zero carbon house, they are free to do so if it is their so desire, if their cost model. So Leeds City Council can, and in my view, should, in order to look after the community, be going further than the minimum. That's all I'm asking them to do is to make this, this more acceptable. Not trying to argue against why we should refuse it. I'm only trying to say, in order to do it, I think we should be putting pressure on the council to say, no, we will go further. We will provide this information about the carbon loss, et cetera, et cetera. And lead by example, that's all I'm asking for. I accept the different roles, but to me, the council have a role to lead here. And it's not planning's role to lead, it's up to the council to.
Just briefly on this particular point. All the members obviously sat around this table are members of the council. I just wanted to make that point. So it's part of that decision-making process. And we are, we are in a period of extreme financial constraint and not wishing to defend the applicant, the council particularly. But I am a council officer, I understand that. But the difficulty you have here, and it's a concern that really does trouble me because I've raised this a couple of times in other arenas, that when we're sat at a plans panel, it's okay for members to want to ask applicants to exceed the policy requirement. And sometimes they do in certain respects. However, when push comes to shove, and if say they were to do that now, let's say they did have the money because there are some budgetary issues here, which are not really for us to consider. And we have a scheme in front of us that's policy compliant, as Jonathan's pointed out. But what happens unfortunately, we've seen it happen at this panel, is that later on some applications, we then get in a situation where the applicant comes back to us because it may have been given to us a bit of a sop to get it over the line. So they've gone beyond the policy compliance potentially for that reason. But actually, when they then come back, because there's still budgetary concerns or viability issues and say, well, actually, we can't do it now for whatever reason. The difficulty is, we get into an argument here where actually we can't actually say no to it because we shouldn't have been asking for it in the first place. I understand the aspiration, but I think we need to have some reality and some reasonableness in terms of, if the applicant is, if the applicant is providing policy compliant schemes, then actually, we should be approving them, not, not going beyond that. Now, I've said before that in the presentation, that the, the council, certainly the policy section, are aware of some of the vacuums that are in these policy issues and are developing policies. But again, that takes time. So sometime next year, we will be chasing more trees and we will have a policy that's less crude than we have now. But as I say, if we've got a situation, you can ask. But the situation is, you've actually been told that they don't have the money to do it and the application is policy compliant.
I'm sorry, but that's, I disagree fundamentally with that because it, it is our job here to make sure that this application is acceptable and that there are nothing, there is nothing that has been done that the community could suffer as a result of or any child. It's our role to challenge to do that. And I'm challenging on behalf of these people to get a better deal, not with the idea of refusing, but with the idea of improving the application so that it becomes acceptable to us all and nobody has any concerns. And that to me is part of the role of Plans Panel, is it's up to us to challenge, to try and get improvements if possible. And that's why I'm saying that the council could, if they wish. And it's not come down to cost. Go to Leeds University. In terms of the trees, go to Glenn Garner. Glenn Garner has got an excellent way of calculating the asset value of trees and also the amount of carbon that a tree emits. He is an expert on it. We have an expert in this council who can do it if we, so that's, you know, the council expert can give us the information if they are so minded and they are brilliant at the job they do. Don't get me wrong, they are brilliant at their job in doing that. That's why we've got such a good forestry section. I know some of us might criticize them for other reasons, but.
Would you like to answer the remainder question?
I guess I would like to add to what Jonathan and Steve already said. How I see it councillor, and it, it's a planning application. And when we prepare planning application, we look at policy. If there is a chance to do something better, and a lot of these school projects actually end up to have improvement like this one. We have additional fifteen trees and we doubled the biodiversity improvements that obviously is all at cost to the applicants. So when we have opportunity, we, we try to do better. And I appreciate that this is an application by Leeds City Council. But I guess the beauty of planning policy is that it's, it applies to everyone. It doesn't really matter who is the applicant. So when I assess the requirements for this planning application and advised Leeds City Council and design team. And when I've met with the planning department, ecologists and landscape. You know, we, we basically, we were told, this is what we need to provide, these are the policies you need to consider. We have been told to look at, you know, opportunities to include more trees and we've, we have included. And I appreciate maybe the fifteen trees is in what councillors had in mind. But this is the limitation. It is policy compliant and we have looked at what currently the policy is. I think the issue is with the council's updating its policy. I mean, with the carbon assessment of the trees, I have actually looked into it and I've seen some of the information the councillor Anderson referred to. So I'm aware of this. I think I'm going to be a bit blunt and maybe I will regret it, but I can, okay. So even if we've done the assessment, we're still back to square one, which is, we don't have more money for trees. So, but I think Steve covered it in a report that wasn't covered in position statement that it is obvious. that it is obvious and we admitted that these, these trees that we're planting, although the 52 of them are already 10 years old and growing elsewhere. Um, obviously I'm not going to provide the same carbon, carbon storage as some of the early to, to, I mean, young to early matured trees that are at the side there. But eventually they will. I just, we were at the point of the application that this was an ask of us, the two application meetings. It's not, it's not a policy requirement. And the outcomes of the survey wouldn't get us any further. It was, if it told us, yeah, you need 200 more trees to offset this instantly, where would I get the 200 trees from? We wouldn't. So this is the truth and I wanted you to know how we assess the situation as well. Thank you.
I'm happy to accept what you said. What about the other questions I asked?
Okay, so, um, the other questions, um, I think I got lost in a wider discussion. If you could cancel.
Pretty earthworks, health impacts and recycling the pit.
Excellent. Thank you for reminding me. I've scribbled some of the notes over here. So in terms of the number of vehicles, I do not have the exact number of vehicles. However, because of the nature of the works, this ain't not being a building in construction. Um, I think the impact will be much lesser than what it was on the access and on the surrounding works during phase one works. I have already confirmed the highways officers, officer recently that we are using the same site access that it was used for phase one. And also this access is known to be wide enough and suitable for fire engines, et cetera. Um, so there isn't again, a requirement for us to provide the details upfront. And we tried our best with that contractor coming onto the project halfway through to provide as much as information now so we can assess, you know, impact on trees, impact on highways. So simple answer, I don't have number of vehicles, how, how many of them? But this can also be controlled. There are plenty of types of vehicles. We're going to have the discussion with the highways officer discharge of condition stage, which ultimately will allow us to adapt the size and weight of the vehicles to local highway network. Um, and earthworks. I mean, I've got plenty of information, how deep the cut and fill, fill is going to go and how they're going to do it. Um, again, we have a contractor appointed who is a very experienced contractor, who also knows the site very well from phase one. I mean, everything will have to be undertaken in line with all the regulations and procedures which apply to hedgehogs and everything else. So however, given that I'm not a design manager or contractor, I don't think I can provide any specific details on earthworks.
How many vehicle movements do you need? Because then as the highways officer will be able to confirm, it had a significant impact because you've got to get the, the loads of earth in. You've got to get the vehicles back out again and it does damage the road. It means there's an argument over who's going to be responsible for repairing the road that comes along there. Does it fall to highways to repair it? Or does it fall to the applicants to repair it? It's important we know so that we can condition it because in my experience, what happened and this highway officer hopefully will confirm, it came because the council didn't write tight enough conditions. So what I was looking for was from yourself, if you put a condition on us, we will comply with it fully. That was all I was wanting from you on that one. Nothing else. That was, that was it.
Councillor, just obviously I couldn't confirm the exact number of vehicles again. However, what I can say to you, and I think I forgot to mention, David just reminded me, we are reusing the soil from the earthworks. Uh, and we've already provided the council with details of the location of the area we're going to stockpile it. So instead of this material being brought into the site in large vehicles, we already going to have that material within a site. And also if we propose, for example, to have four vehicles coming daily and if this is not appropriate for the high, for the local roads, I'm sure the highways department will let us know at the condition stage and basically reduce the number of vehicles that come into the site. So I guess we can, there is a good opportunity to deal with it at the detail stage. Thank you.
It's just, just in addition to that, to, to steal, um, uh, Emma's thunder. We can obviously put a condition on about the highways condition survey to make sure we know the condition of the, the road before and after. Please do.
Yeah, uh, just thanks councillor. You know how well we're involved with Headingly and Golf Course. But these are significantly larger developments than what's in front of us now. Right. So the, the, the highway condition survey was actually tightened up. We've, we've fixed it and we've learned from these. I accept that. We've learned from Horstforth Golf Course and from Headingly Golf Course. And if it's, it's a, it's a before and after highway condition survey, we can, and the developer, the council will be responsible for fixing any damage goes to the highway, to, to the highways. That's fine.
Thank you very much. Um, anyone?
So, um, again, I'm not a 3G pitch specialist and still the final design will come at the condition stage. However, I've discussed the recycling of the existing 3G pitch with David. And as you appreciated, it was a company that installed the pitch. And therefore the school who doesn't have the expertise or the capacity to recycle is relying on the expertise of a specialist to deal with 3G pitches. Um, I cannot comment whether there's any facility in Leeds or anywhere else because I haven't done the research. So I don't understand how it will be disposed of. Um, I'm, I haven't, I've done a few 3G pitches in my career, but I've never actually been asked about this question. The 3G pitch that's currently on the school site is coming to 10 years. It's currently not being replaced yet. Obviously it depends really on usage and maybe on maintenance. So unfortunately I can't answer how we're going to recycle, how we're going to deal with it. And I can't really answer for, you know, waste management industry and the fact that this is not being done locally as suggested by the objectors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is it going to be a quick one councillor?
Um, at any, at any point was there any consideration of extending the current 3G pitch? And that way you could have, okay, because I, I, I guess there's, there's an argument to say, well, we can gain, you know, maybe more soft play area, which is better for competitive sports. But I also think that you've really overlooked something really basic and fundamental, which would have been the gain of such a beautiful space for the children in the first place. And you didn't have to have damaged it in the way that it will be. And the concerns that members have, you wouldn't have had to exacerbate any of it just by extending the current 3G pitch. You know, I, I think many members wouldn't have had an, an issue with that. You've currently got 3G pitches, but the children could have gained so much more from orienteering or cross-country with the huge amount of land you would have gained. And I'll be honest, I'm really frustrated that we've come back a second time and, and, and actually a lot of stuff that we brought up first time. It's, it's basically we're going to dig our heels in a, a little bit. So at any point was the current, because obviously we just found out now, it's, you're putting in a million and I think the council are also putting a million. So for £2 million, I'm sure you could have just extended um, the current 3G pitch wider and longer in its current situ. And the children would have gained such an amazing space with, without, without what's going to happen on it.
I might try to answer these questions. Uh, thank you councillor. Um, mixed approach with David. So yes, but when we were asked to consider alternative location, we have considered everything. I think it's, it's, even if we extend the size of the existing 3G pitch and bear in mind, I haven't actually tested the logistics of it because there was obviously a contractor will have to see whether this can be done. However, this will not, uh, obviously deal with the deficit. And yes, we have considered a lot of people actually at the pre-application stage, local community have sent me emails asking whether we consider this area of the former golf course to be turned into an informal place, something like GOAPE or something a bit more unconventional. So unfortunately, because it's a secondary school, they have a bit less freedom what they can do. David will talk about what they already do. However, they obviously they've got a curriculum that they have to stick to. So obviously they can try to amend some of it, I guess. I'm not entirely sure how far that goes. But if they have the curriculum, a national curriculum to stick to, to deliver a certain level of physical education for secondary school, that informal space wouldn't work as well as it would work on primary school. Um, I think David is, um, it would be best if David answers the rest of it. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank you. If we did extend the existing 3D pitch, it'd go into the area where there was the objections 10 years ago, next to the local residents. In terms of the tennis courts, we did have tennis courts, but the new modular bill was built on top of the tennis courts. We're also a school who's got net, national tennis accreditation. So we applied and because a lot of the children don't play tennis within, in a city communities, we had a, a school recognized for tennis. That's why we just want to replace the existing tennis courts that were lost. If they hadn't have built the modular building on top, we would have still had the tennis courts. We do use the external areas as well. We use it for science. Uh, we use it for cross-country. Uh, so, uh, we, we do use over 95% of existing green space that will, will, will be there. And we've, you know, the school's fully supports what the local community want to do with the area in terms of, you know, transforming the golf course into a, a natural habitat.
Please come just back on it. Sorry, the deficit was mentioned again. I'm, I'm not against you getting the land in the first place. I'm, I, I've got frustrations on what you plan on to do the land. So if you're saying like you couldn't have extended 3G pitch, five metres, you know, in length or five metres in width, it certainly wouldn't, I can, you know, you can see on, you can see on the map, it wouldn't have encroached on, on to the neighbours in any way, shape or form if you would have got the, the 3G pitch that you currently want.
I can take half of that question again. So, okay. How to, I think, um, let's break it down. So even if we extend that pitch and make it bigger, um, obviously it'll probably improve some of the aspects, but it's still a single pitch, right? So we still not dealing with the deficit. If the school has a curriculum to teach football or rugby, going back to informal space, they can't teach them in a golf course with the 38 trees over there. They just can't because it's not going to be possible. Um, so I fully appreciate all the questions and I've gone through exact the same questions for last two years I've been working on this project, a little bit less than two years. Um, but we can, if we got, what we've got here today with this application, we've got the opportunity councillors to basically to end all the problems the school are currently having, rather than putting money into half solution that is not going to solve everything. It's ultimately an opportunity to address the deficit, provide enough facilities for rugby, for football, for tennis, that, you know, there's obviously quite important here. So unfortunately, some of things would, to back to your question, some of it will work or some of it wouldn't and it wouldn't be for us a viable and feasible solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other questions? No? And this note, we'll have five minutes comfort break. She just needs to move her legs. Thank you. Five minutes. Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Okay, welcome back everyone. We'll move straight on to, do members have any question to the officers? What's left in again?
Thanks Chair, one, one to. Uh, Steve, one to the legal officer, if I may. In terms of. Questions to Steve, one of the few times I possibly agree with the report that he's put up, and that's a twenty year thing. Um, but leaving that aside. The concern that, that I would certainly have is if there is any agreement for future community use, that it needs to be strong and robust. Similar agreements in my own backyard at Brunkcliff has not worked, um, for all sorts of reasons. The school. It's not as committed to the community as it should be. It can make more money by doing other things. So. I'd be interested in understanding how we can condition a strong agreement that makes sure that the community. Does benefit from any extended opportunities to use this new facility, should it be agreed. Well, at this particular point, as somebody who plays on a three G pitch regularly without floodlights. Uh, as long as it's not dark, that may well be a relevant factor, but you're getting a lot of playing time at this particular point either way. But leaving that aside, declaring an interest that I do actually play on a three G pitch regularly. The second one to the chief legal officer, if you could just run us through the green belt test. So. The sporting element of it, if you like, is not regarded as inappropriate development. So the test should be. Um, the inappropriate development's fencing, it's the fencing that we have to balance up against the. Um, positives of the application. Have I understood that correctly?
Um, yes, we could draft a condition regarding, uh, uh, uh. The community use agreement, but what, what were put before is that it's currently, as a lot of other schools is, uh, let leased. By, uh, Lee City Council. So there's an agreement in place for Lee City Council to be leasing this to the community anyway. So is the, is the question really that we don't trust the school or we don't trust Lee City Council to lease it? Uh, it, it's a difficult one to answer because yes, we could add that condition, but what are we trying to achieve?
At this point, I'll name the school, Brunkcliff already do it through lettings. It doesn't work. It excludes a lot of the local groups at this particular point. Now. We can condition this. I'm sure this isn't a deal breaker in any shape or way, but we can condition it to make sure that it happens. This was a legal agreement that was drawn up over twenty years ago. It's out of date at this particular point. So it's not like I'm going to go letting. So to be honest, I mean, hemlockly unhelpful anyway, but leaving that aside. It just needs to be clear and firm so that the community, the wider community does benefit in the longer term. Because the wider community at this particular point is beginning to get slightly marginalised on a legal agreement that's out of date and isn't effective enough.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we have discussed it with the applicants who have, uh, uh, felt that the current relationship with Lee City Council's lettings was, was acceptable. But yes, we can condition it to that effect, councillor Finnegan.
Councillor Walsher? Oh, sorry.
So in a, in a nutshell, yes, you, you have it correct in how you outlined the green belt test. So we've got. That it development in the green belt is harmful if it's inappropriate. Now, the sporting facilities and the provision of sports facilities can be considered to be not inappropriate development. So that's fine within the terms of the framework. We then need to look at the, the fencing, as you've referenced, and going to whether. Give consideration to preserving the openness of the green belt. And whether that openness is preserved and whether the, the development then, um. Goes against the purposes for including land within the green belt. So the operation of laying out the, the tennis courts, the three G pitches, um. Is not inappropriate because that's the sporting facilities, but then there's the removal of trees, level changes. And the provision of the fencing. So you've got to consider whether that is acceptable, whether the openness of the green belt is preserved. And whether it's balanced with the other benefits that this scheme brings and therefore whether. The, the other benefits that are brought by the scheme outweigh the harm to the green belt.
Okay, councillor Finnegan? Steve, do you want to clarify?
Chair, just before we go to further questions, and I mean, the thought did strike me as I went to the toilet, there was an open door, I might disappear, but. There, there were a couple of misunderstandings, I think, at the beginning, and, and I would like to just bring members back to these because I think it's only fair to do so. Um, going right back to the representations from the community, Beeston neighbourhood plan was referred to. Well, that's at a very early stage. It's not a made plan. So really it's not a material consideration. But better still, in a way, I suppose, actually this site's outside the boundary of that plan area. So that's not really relevant. Okay. There was a bit of confusion, I think, over this pitch size situation. Even if the, uh, the pitch was extended, uh, the existing pitch that's there now is extended and you put another one on. Um, in a way. I think the school's still deficit in its provision. So even then it doesn't actually cover it fully. But there is a bit of an issue here because we talked about the curriculum for the school and not being able to deliver it. And I'm sure the head teacher would correct me if I'm wrong on this. Yes, it's an outstanding school at the moment, but it's struggling and cannot deliver the curriculum. If this provides the delivery of the curriculum, but it's not actually then approved, where does that leave the school with the curriculum? And although the school and the head would continue to take kids into it, because I'm sure as an educator he wouldn't want to do anything else. The difficulty then becomes, does it remain an outstanding school? Because of course it can't deliver the, the curriculum properly. Because as, as was mentioned by the head teacher, this is one of the three things that they really have to do is to provide the educational element. So I just thought I'd clarify that. Um, there was a question, I think, from councillor Hazelwood, and I think councillor Bowden, Bowden repeated it later about the, the pitch and why digging up grass. Just remember that one of the issues here is the, um, area that now is talked about being waterlogged, which cannot be used. Uh, to its maximum, uh, capacity. So really the pitch is quite simply about maximising the uses because the usage of that pitch. By everybody in every age group and including the school and the community. Because there are already areas that have got a, a problem with. And again, even if this pitch is provided, I suspect that actually. In terms of the full area, it's that remains slightly deficient. Councillor Smith asked the questions about, um. Any data to support the construction, uh, type of the pitch and the depth of the attenuation tank. Well, the, the one point that we just missed there was that actually. That attenuation tank, which is effectively the gravel bed. Is, is, has been on, on the data and on climate change issues, is meant to take a one in one hundred rainfall event plus. Forty percent additional capacity because of continuing climate change. So I'm hoping that answers that. It's big. It's the same size as the pitch and deep. Um, there was a question about, that was raised about no interest. One of the letters of support of the application actually comes from Beeston SA FC. I'm assuming FC's football club. I'm not sure what SA is. But, uh, but obviously there is some interest there from other clubs and adult clubs, uh, to, 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 to use the pictures. So it's, it's, it's not wholly correct to say there's no interest. Councillor Anderson made, uh, uh, raised an issue about wanting to make this, uh, application acceptable. And I tried to say at the time that I fully understand that aspiration. But the question I would put back in a way, I suppose, is, but by definition, if the proposed is policy compliant, is it not acceptable? Um. Yeah. Well, well, no, it's not my view, is it? Because if, if on the trees, it's three to one, which is policy compliant. In fact, it's over that, isn't it? Because there's an additional fifteen. Then actually it is acceptable on the basis of our current policy. And I did explain that there are other policies in draft that are trying to improve that situation. Because this is a regular discussion that we have at this Plan Power, but I just want to make that clear. It is actually policy compliant and therefore by definition, it would be acceptable in that respect. There was this issue about the, um, the, the, the crumb, uh, disposal. Ultimately, the end of the day, I don't think this is an issue for panel because the Environment Agency would have the responsibility. If there was any, uh, problems regarding the, the disposal of the crumb at, at, at some later stage. And I, I hear what's been said by councillor Campbell, but I just want to make that point. Um. And, and going back to the hedge, I mean, that, that really was, was a bit irrelevant in a way, wasn't it? Because that was a historic issue. The, the, uh, may or may not have been perpetrated by, by, by the school. I, I honestly don't know, but actually it's not relevant to this application. So I just thought I'd clarify those few things. And I'll do my best to take any other question.
Councillor Walsher, sorry.
Uh, thanks Chair. I think it was councillor Bowden to add a question.
Um, I, I guess it's slightly about before, but in, in regards to the sort of whether or not it's inappropriate, is it, is it not deemed inappropriate? And I know, again, we, we, we kind of going on to the, the deficit aspect, they have a deficit of thirty five percent. And building this supersized pitch. It, it's going to be increasing one hundred and thirty five percent. And the, and by their own measures, it's the requirement is thirty five percent. I think it, you know, I think it is a, they could have, it could have been very easily. To have extended the current pitch by thirty five percent and it would have been maybe the, the same size of what they're going to plan to build now. And I, I, I'm not against the, the, um, you know, the, the land being granted to them. They might have had to have levelled the pitch to maybe have. Um, been able to use it, uh, for athletics or other, or other sports. But is there not a level of inappropriateness? If they could have current land that they could have just utilised what they want to do anyway?
We're, we're actually mixing two things here. It is, it is, it is a question, Chair. We, we, we're mixing two things here, which is green belt, uh, policy. And what, uh, what types of development are considered to be by definition inappropriate? And we came down to the fact that, uh, actually, as, as Pippa explained, that the provision of the sporting facility itself, i.e. the pitch. Is not, is not inappropriate, but actually the surrounding fences. So that's completely separate to actually providing. Uh, or trying to discuss or consider the provision of the pictures actually with on the, on the site. I mean, you might think I'm being picky here, councillor Bowden, but forgive me, it's not supersized. It's just a full size pitch, you know. Uh, and, and yes, you might be able to extend it by thirty five percent, but the thirty five percent extension. Does not equate to the thirty five percent deficit that the school currently has in overall pitch provision. It needs that pitch. So if you were to increase it by thirty five percent, you then still need another pitch somewhere. To, um, to get up to the, to the, the quantum that they, they require if they're going to follow the, uh, the, the, the guidelines. And within the school boundary, the only place that you can put that is further to the north. Which is exactly where the pitch ten years ago was withdrawn because of significant objection from the community. For a number of reasons, which was included lighting, but noise and, and the ball damage and removal of tree stroke hedging on that boundary. So the school recognised that and pulled that pitch, which was required at that time. And bear in mind, that's a full ten years before. The modular buildings were required and the additional kids were taken to the school. So it was probably appropriate at the time. But the increase in the size of the school means that this pitch is now required. And actually. If you think about it, and I'm trying to make this really simple, because I think some of the issues have got lost in the argument a tiny little bit. If you extend it by thirty five percent, it doesn't give you that quantum. So you would still need another pitch. So yes, you could do it, but you need another pitch. Where do you put that? Within the boundary, you're going to shove it exactly where nobody wanted it ten years ago. So you're going to create another problem with the local community. The other issue is to try and force it down to the, uh, to, to force it onto the area which is currently flooded. But the fact that it, it does get flooded, yes, some of it could be solved, but again, you don't really have the area. And then the other alternative is you actually rob the school of another facility that it already has and wants to keep, which of course is the running track. It's, it's a nasty vicious circling away is this. And this is why ultimately those discussions, I'm sure, because I wasn't part of them. Took place with the school back at the, um, uh, the, the, the board report that we keep referring to, I've forgotten the name of it now. I'm sure that's why the conclusion was that in terms of safeguarding, uh, the most appropriate place to do this. Uh, and, and the, the areas that were available was the redundant, uh, uh, um, golf course, or at least five percent of that area. So I, I, I hope that answers that, that question.
And, um, I, I guess the other question is, so, um. I was in education for nine years and, and to, to the best of my knowledge, um, that. I don't think the Department of Education does ask you to have three G pitches. I don't think, I don't think in, uh, the Department for Education requires three G pitches for them to carry out rugby or football.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm assuming you're correcting that.
Maybe, I know that I, I might, I might be wrong, so that's why I'm asking as a question, is it the case?
Well, I wouldn't, I, I, I don't know, but I'm not going to argue the point because that, that's not really the, 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 the discussion here, is it? The, the problem is.
I, I, I think it really clearly is the main issue, actually.
Can I, can I? Can, can, sorry.
People speaking. I don't want everyone at the same time.
Can I just finish, please? I think, I think the problem here is that we've said before that actually that pitch is required of that type. that actually, that pitch is required of that type to maximise its usage. And you can use a three G pitch because of its construction and because of its maintenance much more intensively than you can a traditional grass pitch. That's the difference and that's the point that I need to make.
Councillor Campbell.
I think we've got past this now. I think we might as well go on to comments, frankly.
Oh, right.
I don't know whether this is for Mr Butler or the legal officer. Now, I may be being slightly naive here, but I always thought green belt was about natural environment. I'd like to know what's natural about a rubber pitch, plastic grass. There's nothing natural about that. How does it pass that green belt test?
It passes a green belt test because green belt actually has to do about the environment, but also openness more, preserving an open view of space so that nothing is harmed, nothing's harming that, nothing's impacted on that vision that you see. And therefore, a three G pitch or sporting facilities of any type are deemed not to be inappropriate because of that reason. The openness with most sporting facilities is preserved. So under the National Planning Policy Framework and F code by our local policy, we see that it preserves the openness and therefore it's not inappropriate development to have sporting facilities. I think one important thing to keep in mind when we're looking at the green belt issue and also discussion that's been going around about the possible carcinogenic nature of the materials used, as well as how it's going to be disposed of, is that some of these points are issues, well, particularly on the type of material used and disposal. Those are governed by other areas of legislation, which is not planning legislation. And so the role of planning committee is not to be here to usurp another area of the law that is already dealt with by another area of law. Planning committee is here to implement the planning law, which is what we're looking at today. And also, to consider what defensible reasons committee might put forward for refusal if this application was going to be refused today. And committee would need very strong watertight reasons for refusal. So that's got to be considered. For example, with the tree replacement provision, what is being offered by the applicant is policy compliant. So if trees were seen to be such an issue by panel that it led to refusal, that would put forward a refusal reason. I don't know what the refusal reason would be because what is being delivered on the trees, for example, is policy compliant. So there wouldn't be a reason for refusing the application on that basis.
Sorry, councillor Gavani, it's not a naive question because actually, the wording of inappropriate or not inappropriate, if you're looking back at it, somebody ought to have done it in plain English because it's shocking the way that it's written. But can I just make the introduction to what Philippa said perhaps a bit simpler? Put simply, some things in the green belt are deemed appropriate. That's what it says. One of those things is facilities for outdoor participation in sport. What it doesn't do, it doesn't make a distinction as to whether that is artificial or natural. Does that help?
Councillor Heselwood. On that, if we're looking at what is appropriate and inappropriate in green belt and you're saying this is appropriate, the lighting isn't appropriate, so why are the cables being relayed?
I'm not quite sure where that goes because I explained in the presentation, because I did ask this of Maria as to why those were being put in. And in a way, the response makes sense, doesn't it? Because if you're going to put an awful lot of expense to creating that pitch and whether you may have an aspiration at a later date to put lighting, which they may have, but we're not here to question that because that's not the scheme that's in front of us. But if you have that aspiration in the back of your head and they've removed it from the scheme, so they obviously did at some point and they may still do, but that will be covered by a separate application. But in terms of just the simple economics of it, if you've got the opportunity to do it now, why wouldn't you? Because otherwise, a lot of the stuff that you've just built and put in, such as the paths and the surrounding infrastructure, you will then be going back and taking out and adding to the costs. So I don't see why that's complicated because if anybody's suspicious of the motives for doing that, that's fine. But that will be controlled by a separate application. And then, as Maria knows, when she was given the pre-application advice, the city council planning department have some issues with that because of the close proximity to the woodland and the impact on the nature and all the rest of it. But that would be covered by a separate application. And obviously, because of the debate today and the concern that's been raised, almost certainly, that application will be called to come back to this panel for yourselves to discuss again.
Okay, can I ask Philippa with the inappropriateness of development? So it's not the fact, councillor Gavani asked the question, and you said it wasn't the fact that it's three G, that it's plastic. It's the vision, you know, the openness that needs to be maintained. So the problem is with the fencing rather than the actual pitch, yeah? So what about lighting then? Is lighting inappropriate as the fence would be inappropriate and that's what we have to consider?
So that would have to be considered at the time that any consideration of lighting was being put forward as a separate. And in that instance, again, as to whether the lighting, if any lighting was brought forward as part of an application, so whether that interferes with the openness of the space or whether that is deemed inappropriate. And if it is deemed inappropriate by panel, whether that can then be balanced against what benefits are seen and whether those benefits that are coming forward outweigh the harm and the inappropriate element.
So the simple answer is actually yes. But if they were to come forward with an application, they would then have to make a special case for us to consider as to why we would have basically overrule that inappropriateness. Is that, okay?
It is, but it still seems inappropriate if that's what we're talking. Okay, we was on comment. Councillor Campbell.
I think we're all sitting here in a very difficult position. And we've been accused of, or apparently accused of not wanting to do the best or the council have decided that we want to do this. And I think there must have been a bit of an issue two or three years ago when the discussion took place about extending the school itself. And I get the impression that certain commitments were made in relation to extra land for playing facilities. And I think that's caused a bit of a problem. So I suppose if I take a step back and then take a step forward and start again. And this is where I disagree with Steve on policy. And I think we all understand now the issue in relation to green belt. So my interpretation is, in effect, there should be no development in green belt. That's national and local policy. Unless there are very special circumstances. And if there are very special circumstances, there can be some development. And it's helpfully described as development that can be considered not inappropriate. Double negative there, which is always a gem, isn't it? And in the past, playing pitches have been regarded as not inappropriate. So if we are persuaded to set aside green belt policy, and this is the policy decision we are going to make, then this use does seem to be compliant with policy. If we agree the initial policy, we should be set aside green belt. And the question we have to ask ourselves is, are the reasons for setting aside green belt policy sufficiently strong to counteract the issue in relation to the detrimental effect to the green belt? Because this will have a detrimental effect on the green belt, okay? And that's a decision we have to make. And it's a difficult decision to make. It would have been much easier for me to make that decision if I felt that as part of the application, steps were being taken to mitigate against the visual impact, the wildlife impact, the sustainability impact on the green belt of the development. I would also have been happier if I had some confidence that there would be a significant community benefit for doing this. Okay? And I've got a number of points, and I have to say, I don't believe there is a significant community benefit. Okay, so I've got a number of points that, in no particular order, which at the moment mean I have great difficulty in supporting this. Now, I'm not saying in the future I never will have. I'm simply saying at the moment I have. So I'm not clear from what was being said and the documentation about the new footpath route, about how suitable it will be and how appropriate it is. And I appreciate that diverting a public footpath is for public rights away. But in effect, if we were creating a public footpath, we would expect the public footpath to be usable by everybody. And I am not clear from this that it is. And I've said it before, I do think the school should have put the application in when they built the extension because they've known about the issue in relation to a shortfall in space. And that shortfall's been in place for some considerable time. I'm also not clear in relation to the drainage. And I know we've talked about this tank underneath the pitch. But I am looking at my personal experience relating to the school next door to where I live, where they're also putting a three G pitch in. And as part of the planning permission for that, there was a much more detailed set of drawings provided, which covered how the water would be collected, how the water would be filtered and how the water would be disposed of. I don't see any of that information here. That could be me. I think the other point that we need to talk about, and this is the point that I think Barry was raising, in relation to, I suppose, what we're asking in relation to gain. And Mr Butler's basically said, well, that's going to development plans, that the new improved, for want of a better word, is going to development plans panel next week. And therefore, it'll be some time before it's accepted. But it's going to development plans panel. And I don't feel that development plans panel will say they don't agree with it. But the baseline is, we own this site. It's our land. And if this was a private developer, we'd be using this as a ransom. We'd be saying, no, we'd like you to meet our new policy. It's not particularly onerous. Or it's slightly more onerous, but it's not particularly onerous. So we, as the landowner, who are allowing the development to take place, would like you to meet our new policies. And it's not, you know, we're not being rotten about trees. You know, it is a well-thought-out policy. I know Mr Butler keeps referring to it as the redundant golf course. But, you know, sometimes it was a golf course, quite frankly. And if you go and look at it now, you'd never know it were a golf course. It looks like a meadow, actually. And I think you've got to stop pretending that simply because by calling it a redundant golf course, it means that somehow this is more acceptable. I've mentioned the trees. I have some concerns about planted whips because, I don't know about the rest of you, but if you look at the big tree planting we've had over the last two winters, the success rate on whips is absolutely diabolic. And I would say to you, if I look at Ottley, if you look at it on the negative side, we've planted two and a half thousand whips, of which one and a half thousand have died. So we've killed one and a half thousand trees. So I'm not sure about that. The nature team do have a view, and you said the school disagree with it. I'm going with the nature team, quite frankly. I think their view is. This path that's got sets on it, the old path, which is mentioned in the Beeston Nebruck Plan. And I appreciate if the Beeston Nebruck Plan is not adopted, it isn't full planning law. But it depends what stage it's at. And if it's been identified, then it is a material consideration, in my opinion. And it seems to me that, in effect, the school are building a fence round the path. And it said at certain times of the day, well, mostly at night, it'll be accessible to the public, even though there's nowhere to go. And so it seems to me, why isn't the red line going round the path? Because at least that would give some ownership. And if it is a historical asset, it would mean that somebody looked after it. Because at the moment, I don't see anybody doing that. I think there has to be a condition which relates to the end-of-life strategy of the pitch. Again, going back to Prince Henry's, there is a condition about what do you do at the end of the ten-year period? You know, and we do that on a regular basis. So if it was a temporary building, we'd say, and at the end of ten years, you do this X, Y, Z and get rid of it. So there needs to be a condition like that. The reference to it's been used all the year, it isn't going to be used all the year by the community. And this is what really concerns me in relation to the community. We are taking away a green belt asset, which currently they can freely use. They would, I'm sure, there are a number of community groups who will be more than happy to use an all-weather pitch. Okay? I feel there needs to be a much clearer management plan about how the community use that pitch, what the guaranteed use time is and whether you like the lights or not. I have to ask the question as you did last time. If it gets to four o'clock in December, it's unusable because you can't see anything. So there has to be something about that. I think also there needs to be some sort of policy in relation to the management of the construction. You know, Barry touched on the vehicles going in and out. There may not be that many, but there will be implications of vehicle movement. So we need effectively a construction plan. And in relation to the health potential, possible health risks associated with rubber crumb. If I'm honest, I haven't seen any evidence that there is, any evidence that I would accept that there is a health risk. I know there's quite a bit on Facebook about it. But it is quite simple. We could simply ask our public health people, what is the current thinking in relation to this? And if we're satisfied, then we're okay. So I think from my point of view, panel has to make a decision. Do we agree the principle of setting aside green belt policy to allow this to happen? But if we do, then for me to agree to it, all those boxes have to be ticked. Sorry for going on for a long time, Chair.
Do you want to respond to those, Chair? I thought we were in question.
No, comments. Yeah, comments.
Thanks, Chair. Gosh, it's been a long and detailed afternoon, Chair. And I think one of the glories and beauties of the UK planning system is its attention to detail. And we've seen that this afternoon. I do think, though, in the course of this afternoon, I think regrettably with rather lost sight of what is at the heart of this application. And it would be helpful if other members of the panel didn't chatter and chunder when other members are speaking. That would be, thanks very much. I don't think we need to indulge in that.
We have one meeting. Councillor, sorry, just a second. Councillor, I meant to, Megan, could you please let members speak? One meeting, Councilor Shaw, just a second. Councilor, I meant to, Megan, could you please let members speak?
Thanks, Chair. So what's at the heart of this application is that in an extremely deprived community, where for too many decades, education was not what it should have been. And that's putting it mildly. This is an outstanding school, and it badly needs these facilities. Let us not underestimate the benefits to the life chances of children in this area from extending these sports facilities. To some, that might sound like a small thing, but I think it's enormously important thing. What, what do sports of all kinds build? Well, they build character. They build resilience. They build the ability to take defeat and victory in equal measure. And this application will allow children to to see more of that and the school to fulfill its needs. It is an outstanding school. That needs repeating again. We can't have commentary that somehow if all facility, school facilities don't have this, then this one shouldn't. There shouldn't be a race to the bottom in any commentary on education facilities in this, in this, in this city. So let's look at planning matters. We need to concentrate on planning matters this afternoon, colleagues. There is a green belt test. To my mind, this is part of the green belt test. And I think that's been clear from, come through from legal and from others. There is a net tree and a net biodiversity gain. Let us remind ourselves that this proposal takes only five percent of what used to be the golf course. It is now, as councillor Campbell said, rather looks like an assortment of meadows and succession areas. It only takes five percent of that area that was only gifted to the community in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And if we cast our mind back to the map that was displayed, Chair, that showed both the golf course and the Middleton Park Estate, we can see that in reality, that's an incredibly small part of that area. Now, the trading of that incredibly small part of the area provides enormous benefits to this community. There's been a lot of commentary this afternoon that separates the children of this community from the community. I disagree. Communities are cohesive holes made of all age groups. And frankly, as a father of three, I tend to put the children, my children at the heart of my thinking and the heart of the way we look at all things that come across, come to us in, in live chair, including this plan application. I think, actually, going back to quite a long time ago, when Mr Butler did his magnum opus, I think, and it is a difficult, somewhat difficult application, but I think councillors Burke and Scope's got the balance right. Yes, there are concerns, but none of those concerns outweigh the incredible benefits that this community could benefit from. Somewhat of a cliche, isn't it? Unfortunately, in English culture, where there's a joke, oh, won't somebody think of the children? Well, actually, it shouldn't be a joke, should it? We have an opportunity before us here to absolutely think of the children. That's why I'll be supporting this application, Chair. And I would also draw colleagues' attention, lastly, to two things. Climate emergency gets mentioned a lot, and colleagues will, well, colleagues will know that I have some considerable experience in climate, climate fields. One of the biggest impacts a school has is its school run. This school has a predominantly walking catchment. It is a local school for local children, for the local community. That's possibly one of the best, best contributions a school can do to the climate emergency we face. And lastly, I genuinely, hand on heart, cannot see a valid planning consideration to turn this application down. So I'll be voting in favour for it, Chair. Thank you.
Councilor Finnegan.
Thank you, Chair. I feel like I'm in an altered universe at this particular point, and I had to look up the sixty series. Sci fi series that are actually put in a weird and different world. And it's the outer limits, for those of us who've been around long enough, we might remember the outer limits, woo, 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 all that sort of stuff. And why do I feel I'm in this alternative universe? Well, for one, I'm agreeing with councillor Walshall for the first time that I am aware of at this particular point. But for another, we have an educator who's done wonders for working class communities, given a harder time than Persimmon, when they came along, or Redrow, or another developer coming around at Capital Park. And I find that utterly and totally bizarre. You know, at the point where, quite rightly, we should be talking in very strong terms to developers, we're not, we're backing off. And yet at a point where an educator has turned around the education system in South Leeds, where they're questioning his motives and making all sorts of weird and wonderful allegations against him at this particular point. Now, I've been around long enough, and some of you have also been around long enough, to know what a basket case South Leeds education was, any time from two thousand onwards at this particular point. And this educator and his team have turned that round and said to working class communities, no, we're not going to accept a second class education for you. We're going to make sure that you have higher aspirations. We're going to make sure that you don't give in, that you don't accept second class, whether that's in sporting activities or whatever it actually might be. And then we're also told, well, you know, we can get rid of the tennis courts because working class kids shouldn't be playing tennis. Perhaps that should be left to eat in a harrow or some other places at this particular point. And the point where we have a significant problem with obesity with all kids, but particularly amongst the working class, we are obsessing about some health issue that may or may not exist other than on Facebook. So it's a peculiar, peculiar world that we're finding ourselves in at this particular point. This school is offering a working class community that got left behind real opportunities at this particular point. And it's doing that under very difficult circumstances. And what we're saying this afternoon is we don't care about these difficult circumstances. We're going to continue to make sure those circumstances remain difficult. Instead of giving out a bit of a hand up to make sure that those kids continue to thrive and do well despite the communities that they've come from. We were hearing from ward members that they know it's difficult, and it's a challenging application at this particular point. But they're the ones who speak up for their particular community and say, we know that the kids' education is ultimately the heart of this application. So I am bemused, bemused why, colleagues, certainly colleagues across, but I thought they've been chomping at the bits to make sure every working class kid gets the best opportunity possible. It's when I figure out all sorts of different, difficult obstacles to put in the way of them achieving this. Because on straight planning grounds, as you know, what we're talking about is a refusal on green belt, on a green belt basis, which is really about the fencing. Only the fencing is inappropriate development at this particular point. Now, to overcome that, you have to show very special circumstances. You've heard that from the legal office at that point. So you've got some fencing on the one hand, and you've got real opportunities for the community, better education for working class kids, really helping and supporting the community on the other hand. Now, we're supposed to be about balance. And I can't figure out how the impact of some fencing is so overwhelming that it undercuts all of these other opportunities, all the options that we've got, where we can do something exceptionally positive at this particular point. Because those are really the only grounds that you can refuse this application of. It's policy compliant. And I'm a serial refuser of officers' recommendations at this particular point, a serial refuser. In fact, I can't remember the last time I supported one, but leaving that aside, the bottom line is when you condense this down, if you're looking at the broader issues, the balance, it's about making sure this community benefits positively. And we give this school and all of the kids that attend this school a hand up. And this is what it's about this afternoon. This is ultimately why, despite the weird world that I'm finding myself in, I will be supporting councillor Walshall in his approach to this particular application. Thank you, Chair.
I will, honestly, I will be brief. Honestly, on the educational side, I agree with what councillor Walshall and councillor Finnegan have said. On the educational side, no problems at all, totally support, nobody's, I know that again, he was actually arguing against what, anybody's arguing against that.
Sorry, could one person speak?
I think we all agree with those figure comments. Where I do have a difference is the balance that we need to look at, what we can do for the community. We also have members, the two members that were read out today are broadly supportive of it, but we'd like to, I got the impression, we'd like to see some enhancements and some further things being done. Two other councillors have contacted, have contacted either all of us or some of us, and in broad terms are supportive, but would like to see other improvements done. So I, so where I'm coming from on this, because then if you look at page twenty, the number of organisations that have raised objections, if you look at paragraph seventeen, where we made comments the last time, have these been resolved? I would say no on balance. So what, and so for the reasons that councillor Campbell put forward, I would actually prefer if we deferred this to get further information and further chance to negotiate on behalf of the community and on behalf of the councillors, we would like to push a little bit further. So that's where I'm coming from. I am not against it. I am not recommending refusal. I am not suggesting refusal. I'm asking for us just to pause for a while to try and get some further clarification on the points that have been raised. Thank you.
Councillor Anderson, councillor Burke and councillor Scope didn't ask for more. What he says, he says, our view is the needs of the children in South Leeds must be provided for. We can't go through all this argument for and against it in short email, but trust that the plant panel will consider all the comments, America, in the meeting. They take you, they ask you to take your comments into consideration. But they didn't specifically say they are asking for more.
Well, my interpretation of what they said is as good ward members, they are saying, on balance, we're in favour of this. But if there is any possibility of enhancement or improvement, we would like those to be considered. That's my interpretation of what they've said. If somebody disagrees, fine. That's my interpretation of them being good councillors asking for, that they broadly support something, but they're aware that some parts of their community have concerns. And if these could be resolved, they would be more than happy if they could be.
Constable.
Yeah, I've actually found this more conflicting than probably anything I've done on Plans Panel in the short time that I've been on it. I still think there's been quite a lot of confusion almost between the granting of the land. But actually, what I think many people have brought up is actually the specific application and what they're going to do with it. I wouldn't have had less of an issue, even if some of the trees were fouled, even if there was some levelling of the ground taking place, and they could have used it. Also, just a, a, a thing that was sort of said before, whilst hedgehogs might be sort of being positioned in, in the woodland, this habitat is exactly what they utilise. They use the edge of woodland. So they might not be being dropped in the current space, but actually, this is, it is actually prime hedgehog land. The utility of the, of the spaces, the resounding issue in wanting to do the three D pitch. And we're sometimes somehow suspending disbelief, and we're pretending that we've never had Olympians, we've had never had top level footballers or rugby players who have spent their childhood playing on grass. And now some, now all of a sudden, the only way to get these footballers, to get these rugby players is to have a three D, a three G pitch. And obviously, I don't buy that.
Sometime we have to make difficult decisions, but with this application, I'm having difficulty with it, because when I first received it and read it, I felt that it was a done deal. You know, so today I felt I've come here to only cross the I's and dot the T's. And I take great offence to anyone who are in here suggesting that we do not care about children in deprived area, et cetera. If you like to know my life story, you'll know what the pride is. So I take great offence when anyone's talking about we don't care about children, or anyhow you want to put it, we, you know, not getting them to climb the ladder, et cetera. Just because we, we, we're objecting to certain things and, and passing remarks that not all schools have tennis courts, and that the school don't have to have tennis court for children to move forward. And regarding the, the pitch with us asking for it to be extended, et cetera. You know, so I take great offence with that. It's nothing to do that we don't want our children to strive and have the best within Leeds, because we do. And when you come from the black community, that's what we do all the time, strive for the best for our children and fight for the best for them, for them to get a step up the ladder. So in, because we're, we're passing certain remarks about what is required, doesn't mean we don't care.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is a tricky call, one. I don't like the idea of the three G pitch, five G pitch, however many G it is. Football pitch, grass pitch, yes. As I said when we looked at this a month ago, a local sports club with over one hundred teams, that's eleven hundred or so members, is currently building new grass pitches. So it is possible, and okay, if this land is prone to flooding, it's perfectly feasible to sort the drainage out. And it's effectively what they're doing with the gravel sink anyway, is for the drainage. So you can still do that and have a grass pitch. Now, councillor Anderson raised issues of work done at Horstworth Golf Club and Headingly Golf Club. I don't know about Headingly, but I do know a bit about what happened at Horstworth Golf Club. And this is where there's the difference between what happened there and what's happening with this. Horstworth Golf Club saw a lot of heavy vehicles laden with soil in and out, which caused the edges of the road to crumble. And the other big problem was they didn't have any sort of wheel scrub when they were leaving the site. And I don't know, perhaps the highways officer can tell us, or the planning officer can tell us, can that be a condition on the site?
Been clarified.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I think that'd be, that'd be good. Hope, the sports club I'm talking about in Horstworth is effectively doing a similar thing to this, in that it's having to level the site. So there's very little movement of soil in or out. And the local roads are kept clean. So that is one thing here. But I am conflicted over this, predominantly over the, the five G. And they say, sort of, you know, if you've got rugby players landing on it, it, it'll soften the ball. Look, it also deadens balls. Now, I'm a rugby league fan. I've seen teams play in a Widdnes, which had a five G pitch. They had to relearn how to kick because the ball bounces totally differently. I know people who play rugby on five G pitches, and they have to wear protective clothing, because you will get grass burns, serious burns of plastic pitches. It's not a good surface really to play on in many respects. So I, you know, I totally agree with all the arguments about the educational need for it, but I do have some problems with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Eswood.
Yeah, again, apologies because I wasn't here on the seventh of July, I had Covid, so I am, you know, I have come to this. It's the first time I've discussed this, so thank you for everyone's contributions. And, and I too, I have absolutely no issue with the pitches, you know, with sports facilities for the, the pupils at the school. No issue whatsoever. However, you know, and, and, and that, the, the piece of land there that, that's been allocated to the school, I have no issue with that. Just following on from councillor Givani's comments there about the, the pitch. I know when my son played rugby, he mainly played on a, on a grass pitch and had to have boots. Uh, I know when my son played rugby, he mainly played on a, on a grass pitch and, and had to have boots. But then he had to have another pair of boots, because if he went somewhere that played on a, on a three G pitch, he had to have another pair of boots. So again, the cost is, you've got to do lots of kit, basically, for, for depending on what you're playing on as well. So that, that contributes to it. Um, so I, I, again, I find myself in an alternative reality. Um, I find myself agreeing with councillor Campbell and councillor Anderson, um, which doesn't go on record very often. Um, but uh, I would like to propose that, I'm not even going to try to put their recommend, their, their suggestions into a recommendation, but I would like to propose we go with some kind of recommendation around what they were saying, that yes, we, um, we, we agree in principle the development of the green belt, but as the conditions that, that they have put forward, that's what we want to see. And I would also like to put an extra condition that it comes back to next Plans Panel, so we don't delay the development because I'm conscious that they want to get this done for the pupils at the school. So I want it to come back to the next Plans Panel, so we can have those, those, um, details and get it, you know, if you want to pass it, we can get it through.
Is it, yeah?
I haven't spoken all afternoon. Uh, I agree totally with what Jules has said there. We're not against, uh, developing education for our underprivileged young people. That's what we're on this side of the political spectrum for, but any child, but what I am concerned about is the use for the community. And I think that's got to be some condition in this proposal about how they're going to use that facility, because without lights, they're not going to get the, the, the advantage of using that facility in the winter months and at the weekends, because it's going to be solely used by the school. So I think we've, we've got to have some conditioning on that.
councillor Campbell.
If it would help, Chair, uh, if it would help, I will propose that uh, in principle, we accept the rationale for setting aside green belt policy to provide a pitch adjacent, in the green belt adjacent to the, um, to the school, all right? But, um, before we agree to sign it off, uh, we have a number of further uh, conditions, points we'd like clarifying or agreeing. Um, but we are happy to expedite that in as timely manner as possible uh, and more than happy to deal with that at the next Plans Panel meeting. And those, I think, I, I've, I've made a list here, which I'm quite happy to pass on. And I'm not sure if Barry didn't add another one, okay?
So could we have someone to propose something, what conditions? Yeah, but he's got a list, he says.
Chair, Chair, can I, just before we go to any motion on this, um, I think there's a time issue for the school of yet further delay, because as we've said, please let me finish.
Look, with, with the greatest respect, Mr Butler, we have spent all afternoon knocking this about and it should be fairly clear to you by now that some of us, uh, have significant concerns about this development. And we are attempting, we've been accused of not wanting the best, which is not true, which is really upset us. Um, and we are attempting, as I said quite clearly then, to expedite this matter. Uh, because we know that they, the school would like to move forward, we'd like to move forward. And so this is a mechanism for moving forward. Um, it simply requires some element of discussion between the planning department and the school and the local authority, because it's our land. Um, we're happy to deal with that in three weeks' time. Um, now that's not delaying this in a room to war fashion, in my opinion. And so I, I, I really do resent the, the idea that we're delaying it even further. We're not trying to do that, we're trying to move it forward, actually.
Chair, if I can just finish, I appreciate that, but I also appreciate that, that some of the information that was done in the summary is actually inaccurate as well, but we normally in these situations, because if members are minded to actually approve in principle, and I've got a list of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight additional conditions to add, we would normally defer that to the officers to draft those conditions up. And just to remind members, that's the landscape management, car park management, construction and environmental management plan, biodivers, diver, who the, biodiversity enhancement and management plan, biodiversity monitoring programme, community use agreement, which is actually already on there at condition twenty one, by the way. Construction access management plan, which is issue about wheel scrubbers and the end of life strategy for, for the rubber crumb. So all I was going to suggest, if members are minded to approve it, they're subject to the additional conditions, the conditional conditions are in front of you to consider.
I understand that, uh, Mr Butler, but I do think because we have expressed such strong opinions, it would be diplomatic, I think, to show us, for example, the, the community use, um, agreement. And it's not a complicated thing to put together because lots of other uh, schools have this agreement with the community. Um, I, I, I understand that, you know, what, what happens under certain circumstances, but this does seem to be a particularly controversial one. And I think members would like to be confident that what they thought they were creating, they actually agreed.
Okay.
To you, Chair, because I think the most emotions, country motions being made by councillor Campbell.
Yeah, so could someone second councillor Campbell? So should we go to votes, have those in favour?
One, two, three.
Of councillor Campbell.
Walshall. Six, seven, eight. So, so Chair, uh, because an alternative motion's been taken and been carried with eight votes, the application will be uh, put back four weeks, not three weeks, four weeks at best for members to provide, and I want to be absolutely clear of this, because obviously the applicant's got to deal with this. The landscape, uh, uh, management plan. And you want the wording from the conditions, because we will have to agree some of these, car park management plan, construction and environmental management plan, biodiversity enhancement and management plan, biodiversity monitoring programme, community use agreement, uh, construction access management and end of life strategy. Is that it?
There was also a, a, a point about, um, a, a comment from drainage anyway, about the drainage proposals. Uh, there was also a comment in relation to, uh, I suppose, for, for everyone's peace of mind, uh, comment from our public health people about the potential or perceived or potential or whatever, however you want to describe it, health implications of, of that. And I think, I know my personal view, but I think if, if we have on record when we're clear, that we know what we're doing. All right?
Sorry, just.
And I, I do, I also think it is not unreason, it is not unreasonable, I'm going to do this, what the heck. Um, it's not unreasonable for us to say to, um, because this is a city council planning application, it would be nice if we could perhaps go somewhere further to meet in the revised, uh, development plan, uh, proposals, which I'll go into Development Plans Panel next week.
Chair, sorry, two points on that. Uh, drainage is actually covered as a condition, the flood risk management that we've consulted with, we're happy enough with the information that's so far been provided to accept that has been a condition anyway. Okay, so I'm not sure that's necessary. And I do.
Except really.
With, with respect, if, if you remember, Mr Butler, I did touch on the point that, um, there are concerns about this getting into the, the system, and I think they're effectively getting into groundwater. And therefore, I would like to understand, understand how it's, how they are, simply to say there'll be a condition. Um, always as, as some concerns. If the condition, if, if drainage can provide us with the, a wording for the condition, um, which they should be able to do if they've agreed it, uh, that, that shouldn't be any reason for delay.
Fine, I just wanted to make sure whether we're talking about a condition or information, I mean, it seems a combination of both, but I'm, I'm sure we can draft a condition, but again, the last point, I do need to say this, because, um, that request for it to be nice to go towards this policy, this policy actually at this point in time has no weight whatsoever because it's not gone to any meetings, it's not gone to executive board, DPP.
If you recall, Mr Butler, if you recall, Mr Butler, I did not ask this to be a, for this to be a condition. I simply said it would be nice if the, the message got back, um, and that would be nice, I think, um.
Understand that, but I did mention why these sort of requests are, are difficult, because we've been told that they don't have the money to do it. And I pointed out, because of the lack of weight on this, we have absolutely no weight to insist upon it, and I want to make that clear to, 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 to panel. So do you want me to sum it up?
Yeah.
So in terms of summary, the application has been deferred uh, by South and West Plans Panel for a list of conditions which have already, uh, read, uh, read out, so I don't think I need to do it again, but also for further information on drainage and a possible uh, more detailed condition. Um, and the potential implications of, uh, the, uh, it's not the particulates, it's actually the chemicals that are within the rubber crumb, to, to be precise, if there are any perceived impacts, although I do have information actually within this that, that's from all sorts of authorities saying there's none. Uh, and nice, uh, if we could get some more trees.
Thank you, it's moved to item eight, date and time of next meeting, which will be on the twenty eighth of September. Let's hope all our conditions are met, eh? An answer.